All right, it is six thirty Tuesday, November seventh. As you can see, the three folks absent today and before we begin this, it's my second time sharing. So I promise you, I will make some mistakes, ask for your forgiveness and patience. But with that, all this need to worry, if I have the motion to accept the agenda as written. Moved by Liz Cantile.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. First starts. We can buy our statement here, the Citrus Select Board is committed to providing environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner, even when there's disagreements. We value the participation of our community among all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities. We welcome and respect it. We ask our committee members, all who participate, commit to the standard to support and respect our community. And with that, do you have any walk-ins?
Any.
One other. And just for the record.
Hi.
Today, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Well, name and dress.
My name is Frishtle, and I live in Cituit. How are you back today?
Good.
All right, I just have a little statement I want to read for the record. Um, I just, I just want to say this, to put it out in the public forum. You guys are. Been aware of the situation here at the tree for at least two months. And not a single person reached out to the families of the street, this memorial tree that was planted on the common. Somebody decided to dig it up. It's my brother Dan, Chris, Freddie, Pete, and others. They're adding new names to this plaque that didn't even have names because there's so many of them now. But when we first, when we were first in school, these kids, they just kept dying. And that meant a lot to a lot of people. And. Heartbreaking to say the least that this happened without the families being consulted. And I just want to just. You know, say I fixed it, you've been done with the eight, and I got friends memorial park, it's fixed. I put fertilizer on it, I trimmed it, I put caution tape around it while the dogs were trying to eat it. And I would like to, maybe not the time to discuss it right now, but I would like to have my friend Dean engrave a rock for the kids there. That's where the tree is, that's where the energy of all of these families and friends and the class of two thousand and one. Of putting their energy into this tree, this tree that was supposed to be a dwarf that grew too high and they wanted it removed. And yeah, I've spoken with some of the people involved, the families involved, one of the mothers involved. And I think that we've had a lot of healing in the last couple of weeks. And we need to move on, I can't wait for the actual dedication ceremony at this new tree. Maybe it's not a dwarf spruce, I don't know. I don't know if you guys have gotten that far, but I'm probably there to read it home. I look forward to it, I want to say, you know, those that are involved know. Thank you, have a great night, guys.
Thank you.
Good luck with everything.
And any other walk-ins? No, we'll go to the port of the town, there's a fair. Getting updated even as we speak.
Hot off the press.
Good evening, nice to everybody. Well, what would you be able to get done early tonight? Control the confidence in you, Andrew. Just first remind people that the water pump office is currently located here in the town hall. The building is under repair after the strike by a vehicle. The work is coming along great, we're going to make some changes down there that will be better for residents and the employees. Couple of weeks and then we'll be moving them back down. Although, fucking, they're pretty low office. Lighthouse, we've got the lighthouse, our copper installers doing absolutely fantastic job, the lantern is great. It's probably a day or two left, the weather put us back a little bit. So now we are scheduled to raise the lantern to the top of the lighthouse next week. I'm not going to give anybody the exact time, obviously we don't want to cause people out there. Weather permitting, it will be raised next week. That'll be really the next big step. In the meantime, we will start working on the brick, the contractor came out here in the wrong bricks, we've rejected them, so we've got new bricks. We're starting to install the bricks, they have to be drought, and once the lantern moves on top, windows, more copper gliding, some concrete, all the trim, and then the lantern will back in itself. No timeline on when we're going to light that in, strike society hasn't had that conversation with us. We are still on schedule to finish this year, excuse me, but the painting will most likely at this point take place in the spring. Excuse the weather. Speaking of cold weather and bad weather, we are scheduled to be striping on Front Street tonight at ten o'clock. It did start raining a couple minutes ago, so that could put us off again, but we have good weather for that. Anybody back on Front Street after nine, it will be rules, make sure you get it out there, they're all signed up. This will finish our Front Street project, it was a pain, but Mike Reed and his group did a fantastic job, did all the detail offices. Looks great, and we shouldn't have to test that again for another fifty years. Sorry for the inconvenience, but I think it was worth it, and whether many people will finish that out, we'll see. On Chief Justice Christian Howard, the contract, they've been working on the installation of the water line. Right now, they're crossing the bridge at the reservoir on the Gulf of Hill, connected to the water treatment plant is gone, after that laterals. And up scheduled to finish second week of December, it's a little later, but we may have some issues, so. Once it's done, we'll make some corrections to the trenches, kind of smooth that out, we'll sit for the event in the spring after the tenth, yes, seven. We'll make permanent repairs to the trenches. This Sunday is the annual Veterans Day celebration, November eleventh, starting at eleven o'clock at the Council on Agent. This is a great event hosted by Citrus Post one forty-four, the Citrus Food Pantry. Flag ceremony is at eleven AM, followed by lunch at noon. Lunch is hosted by Post one forty-four. At one o'clock, the food pantry will have desserts and gifts for veterans in attendance with music and fun. This is a fantastic event, it's catered by Kiko Cali, who does the whole thing for nothing for the veterans, does a fantastic job. You are required to have reservations, like we may, by calling six one seven eight four two zero zero nine two. By email at commander@citruspost144.org. This event tends to sell, so make sure you get on the line, make the reservation, really is a fantastic event. I want to thank all our veterans for the sacrifices they made for our country and for our town. This is just a small way for us to say thank you, that's, please sign up, show up at lunch. Keep with Veterans Day, the town office will be closed on Friday this week for Veterans Day, we'll be during Friday for the weekday. And what everybody's probably wondering, the transfer station will be closed on Saturday, the actual Veterans Day, November eleventh, so please plan your trips to the transfer station. Another milestone, the police boat, the infamous police boat that was approved at a special town meeting last year has arrived, which is in the garage outside of the police station. It's being outfitted and marked, this boat was paid for by a combination of federal homeland security money and the town appropriation. And then we sold the old boat to make up for what the town appropriated, so that boat really was paid for, mostly entirely by the federal government. Fantastic looking boat, I can't wait to see them get it all outfitted, should be in the water by the end of November. We'll have it ready for, it might happen all the way through all the springs, so thank you to the voters. Thank you to the police marine unit for getting that all worked out, if you have a chance, you want to take a look at it, let me know. The chief will tell you it looks much bigger out of the one than it actually is, so I'll get freaked out to see it. Citrus Food Pantry has requested donations, they're, they continue to be deeply indebted and extremely grateful for generosity of the donors. Right now, they're looking for items for their Thanksgiving meals that are provided by the food pantry. It's the potatoes, and theams, fruit cocktail, pudding in Jell-O boxes, cups, and brownie mix. Items to be dropped off to the pantry during operating hours, on the biz behind the old gate school, Citrus Library, Village Market, and Shaw's, also. That's where I have.
Next. Questions? Questions?
I don't have any. I was wondering, and I'm actually asked you this before, so maybe next Monday, is there an update on the rebate program for the toilets and washers?
Just what was done, if you might have it otherwise, I could have it.
No, next time, yeah. I'm just curious, I know how much you've spent.
If we did put more money in the budget next year.
Yeah.
For a lot of problems, do that, so. So, we've got to be next week. They said, yeah, by the way, that was fascinating.
And only, the question, the cobblestones on Front Street or near, what? Are they by maritas, or they?
I would prefer, Kevin, right now, the plan is not to put those back. Because a lot of issues with the drainage and things, the bottom down, I think the plan is to do painting.
We're going to strike the islands, start set those up. We couldn't maintain a bit of the road with those in the way they were, they didn't come from that. Could have put them back, but would probably take us an extra three weeks of construction on Front Street. Just current, people are asking, so. Do you think? All right. All right, we're going to go for our next.
Twelve thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine spent, so we're forty-nine percent spent right now.
Oh, that's crazy.
That's fantastic, so hurry up, it's going fast.
Oh, yeah. All the toilets.
Everybody needs a free toilet, you get a free toilet, basically.
Wrap it up.
It's plus, it's plus. I'll say a free toilet, but you guys, if you rebake off the cost of the toilet.
You can get that at one place.
We could save more.
And you. Get on that. All right. We're going to call up now Karen Joseph, the town planner at the Lambert's, the MBTA community compliance updates. I'm going to jump before me again, I have to say something. This is you've done, I already know, we've been doing this work. The folks don't need to know how much work we've done. It's unbelievable, it's a state mandate essentially, and I just want to personally thank you for everything you've done. It's been fabulous, we have to get this passed, and we'll, I can't wait to hear where we are in the process, so thank you.
We think that it's not as bad as we originally feared. To achieve compliance, we have, the Cituit has to zone for twelve hundred and thirty-nine units. To achieve compliance, we need to go at a fifteen units per acre in the NRN sub-district, the GWV sub-district, and the GVC sub-district in Green Bush. Those are the only changes we need to make to the density. The North Cituit outer village is already at fifteen units per acre. So those are going to fifteen units per acre. In the next month, we're going to be applying for two mixed-use districts. We're going to be applying for the NDTB district in Green Bush and North Cituit Village Center. North Cituit, between the two of those, they have a unit capacity of two hundred and nine units. And so we're allowed to get up to a twenty-five percent offset. So with the units there, and the rest, and then going up to fifteen units per acre by right, which is just an increase of three units per acre by right. We're already at twelve units per acre by right. We can get the twelve hundred and thirty-nine units. So that, that's the good news. We can do it within the zoning parameters that we already have done, except there will be, there will be the density changes at town agent. The other changes, we'll have several other changes, we have to do some housekeeping changes, we have to change the table. Because we can't have a special permit in the GWV district, and work for multi-family housing, it has to be by right. We have to add some. We have to make a change to our pedestrian frontage zone in North Cituit. We have to take a small portion in the outer village out. And then we're going to do a map change for one property because one property is in two different zones. And it was, it was meant to be all put in one zone, and so it's just that we, we have to. The pedestrian frontage zone is tied with the mixed-use district. And so we have, it's just a minor, minor map change to get that done, and then this piece that we're rezoning is the fourth property. And most of it's already in the Village Central, they're just putting parking area on the side in the Village Central district instead of Fiava Village. And so that, that's a very easy, easy change. We're, we're doing a couple of housekeeping changes in here as well, you know, when we find, when we find a section that doesn't agree with what's happening in the VCN, we're taking that out. We're taking out where it gives something for the planning board or board of appeals. The planning board is the special permit granting authority in VCN, so we're taking out little things like that. We're taking. The fifteen units per acre, we're changing some wording in the purpose of the, of the VCN, just for the, one of the sub-districts. Just to make it agree with the language for the MBTAA compliance. We are changing the requirements in the affordability section for a by right project in the VCN. We can only allow ten percent affordable, we can't exceed ten percent affordable housing without doing a financial feasibility analysis. We don't want to put our bylaw passing in jeopardy, so we're going to go to ten percent for by right for just, just in the VCN. And it's only a by right project, projects comes in for density causes, they will still have to be twenty percent affordable house. We're changing a little bit of wording on the monitoring agents because in fact, the select board is not approving our monitoring agents. The applicants and, but we're approving that. And we, we're changing the parking requirement for just a by right project in the VCN, that it doesn't need commercial parking. So, and it's, we determined that we have public parking lots in North Cituit, we have MBTA parking lots in North Cituit and Green Bush. On a couple of projects we did that had the commercial space, it was about seven to ten parking spots. You still, they still have to provide the residential park. And every place in the bylaw that it says D H C D, we have to change to E O H L C, to comply with what the state's new agency is named. So in fact, it is very minimal changes that we've been able to do, and that's because. We already changed the bylaw for Green Bush and North Cituit. So the planning board is going to be finalizing, in the working committee, is going to be finalizing the language this month. Then we submit our mixed-use districts, we have to submit the compliance model, we have to submit a whole, write up a lot of documents we have to submit. We intend to have a zoning workshop on December seventh, and our zoning public hearing is going to be January eleventh. And then we allow for continued public hearing on January twenty-fifth. But I'm hoping because it's housekeeping changes, that it's really, it should, we may not need to continue public hearing. And then we'd be able to get the select, the select board and the advisory committee's final wording, you know, for the warrant sooner in January than we buy. We are meeting the advisory board later this month, just to give them an update of where we are too, so we're keeping, trying to keep everybody in the loop. So you know what to expect because our final wording won't be until January.
Questions, I've got a few things, but.
Just one question, remind me, I know, I don't have the map. In North Cituit, you said you. Does the mixed-use zoning go all the way to three A, or just now you've added as far as?
No, it doesn't go all the way to three A, it stops just, it's right in, it's right in the center.
So you've added the four.
And the outer village extends to up Countryway to Comasset, and it goes a little bit down Gann Street, the other, the other way.
So you really like. Added that.
So it's like the montage.
Yeah.
And up you get the way I think, that's, it doesn't extend it.
Uh, no, just, yeah, I mean, you're right, all the work, you did all the heavy lifting already, and so we're way out of the curve as far as towns getting close to compliance, good job.
Right, so we're hoping that the state will approve our mixed-use districts. So we asked the, the woman who's helping us, said, nobody else exists for our work, so let me check, go on, do that.
That's right.
So.
That's what's good, number one, we've already done a lot of the work. I guess, not really a question, just make sure I'm explaining this to the folks at all, there's a lot of alphabet soup of different. VCN, NDT, all these different, right? But essentially, the major, we're talking the major changes we're talking about, but talking, folks at all, talking about zoning in Green Bush area, North Cituit, for multi-band zoning. In most of the areas, we're already at twelve units for some of these, and now we've got to grow up to fifteen. And some of these, at the end of the day, some of these properties are already developed, and the state's okay with that, we still be compliance. So for some areas, it's not, you're driving down the street, you're not going to see a big change necessarily. But we're trying to get, I'm just trying to, for folks at all who are in this.
You're summarizing it very correctly.
You know, you're driving along, you're, okay, it's still what we see, but the state wants to make sure that we have the proper zone.
We will have PowerPoint presentations for our zoning workshop and our public hearing, you saw part of them, and we will have. Hopefully, we'll include stuff in the warrant itself so that people can get familiar with the maps and everything ahead of time. And see that it's really not a big, it's not a big change to be able to accomplish the state mandate within most of the framework that we have.
And we're talking millions of, thousands of dollars of state grants and aids, and if you don't comply, but we are going to comply.
Right.
Why do we need a, folks to get involved and make sure we get this passed, is that, summarizing that?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's where we're headed, and if you have any questions, just, you know, email us, and we can get, we can get you some answers.
That's great, thank you.
Can you? Hey, great.
Thank you so much, fabulous.
Hopefully, everything's quick tonight.
All right. That was good news.
Right.
Yes, more good news, we're discussing votes, Kevin Norton here for the Miss Emily food truck. Oh.
Yay.
I love the term hocker. And headler. From the Latin head for, whoops, sell on fuss, headler. So what we're trying to do is.
So what we're trying to do is, basically, we, we did all that speaking on paper, and everybody's asking me why I'm sorry. And I said to people, I'll go over there and ask, I'll, I'll see what they have to say. I, I know it's a little bit of a tougher thing with the way the weather is, but what I'm basically looking for is the opportunity on, you know, a nice weather tonight to be able to do it. People, you know, still want us to, and the other thing too, I'll be honest, like I'm going to do the arts fair this weekend at the high school. It's hard for me to prep a truck for one event, you know, if I could prep it for a Saturday at the high school and then pluck out a theater, which was reality, I can get rid of everything. And it's, it's really slow during the day Saturday, I'm just like, it's not cool, it's usually. That's why, it's, it's tricky for me to do it, but I think the people really, if they're asking about it, I don't think, I don't, I don't think I'm hurting anybody, loving it. I mean, it's kind of nice that I don't want them to do it, I'm wanting to stop it, but I figured that out, twenty minutes now.
Congratulations on the success.
Yeah, thank you.
Is, is Katie Neal here from the Denny?
I am, yeah.
Come on.
Same conversation.
Same conversation.
Kevin said, same deal. My permit license ended in October, actually, so I was, we see if I could, he extended it to December as well, just same thing, people are asking. I'm kind of push breweries and stuff, but you know, people want to see the lighthouse. Mainly the lighthouse, well, not necessarily every day, but a nice day in November, December, we'll go out there for flowers and party or something, so yeah.
How are things going all around? I'm curious more from like, challenges, this rebuilding, I mean, I don't know. What's going well, what's not going, how came to town?
I found, we had a very busy year, it was our first year, we had a lot of, you know, people really enjoyed it. Like, it really had a cool thing for us to have, we had, we had kids ordering fish and chips. We had all, you know, it was really, it was a fun, it was a fun thing to do in the area, so I, I think it went really well. The town's been great, the people in town have been great, we've got awesome customers, we've got loyal customers, every night, we've got people come, every night, the trucks go over with the same people. So I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm very grateful for that.
Any good challenges or things that are difficult or?
I mean, no, not really, kind of the same thing, this is my second season, and it's been great, I mean, I've been following, and now that people know where I am, this schedule, they've been coming, and people like the nice, the lunch options. So basically, same thing, yeah, I have my regulars, and it's nice to be able to do it for a longer period of time. And then, you know, the, the cold months, January, February, March, that's fine, but you know, December, November, December, there's still some nice days, but yeah. Yeah, today was beautiful, it was like sixty-five. But yeah, same thing, it's, people are asking, we have our regulars, it would be nice to still go out. Yeah.
Guess Instagram or?
We did, yeah. Social medias.
Trying to get a free, uh, audience to know. Uh, where are your thoughts?
It's a number I never mind on, yeah, if you can support local business and get people happy. I don't see anybody hierarchic, so I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious, why were the nates?
Seasonal.
It was just seasonal on that, so the people always were western, no. Yeah, I agree. I've enjoyed going, so. Would you like a motion?
I would love.
Yes.
I would love both motions.
Yes.
Two of them. Move the select board, then the hocker and headler license for the Miss Emily food truck to extend operation date through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, for the existing permitted locations and hours. And move the select board, amend the offer of headler license for the Denny food truck to extend operation from December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, for existing permitted locations and hours.
Motion. Motion. Cantile, second witness, Harrison, do I have a? Close, there you go, roll call, excuse me.
We can just say aye.
Aye.
It was unanimous, you've been extended through. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, we're going to do it tomorrow.
I'm going to see you this weekend.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, great.
I'll see you on the speaker.
Next, for Victoria Nonley, for a common vic license. How are you?
Hi, how are you?
Now, I'd love to first start talking about the cupcakes. Did you really win?
I did, I did, it's a long time ago, but I did win.
That was, well.
Did too.
Couldn't sway it already.
I did, I wasn't sure if that was appropriate at all. And then you immediately needed to be treated, I, I should have, I should have.
Well, tell us all what you're doing, some of the backup, excited, you haven't ate a cupcake, but a lot to, you're a war.
I'm, I'm really excited, so it will be a full-service scratch bake with the car, bread, cakes, party cakes, custom cakes, breakfast pastries. All of the goodies that you would imagine for the bakery, full service. And then we will also do breakfast and lunch based on the French tatties, so a big slab of sourdough, and then a really, really fun toppings. Um, seating for 17, uh, and also attending to go. And the space can also intend to accommodate a guest room or a baby class sliding door. So people can have finish showers, parties, community events, uh, classes. I'm thinking we could do a new book club. We could do a play group club. We could do any, any number of things that people would like. Everything security or gathering. Basically, a quality or something new.
So why Cituette opened this up? Why, uh, bakery? How, how did you get interested? I mean, I think, I mean. Still, we're heading in the right direction. I'm not trying to get you in the spotlight.
Yeah. Um, so I had two bakeries in Boston, um, a while ago, a long time ago. And then I moved to the South Shore, had babies, brought them up. They're now nine and six, so I have a little bit more time on my hands. This is always been the goal and dream. Uh, I was looking, I'll be honest, I was looking everywhere on the South Shore. I live in Hingham, so, uh, if I was looking there first, just nothing was the right fit. And, uh, when I first thought of space next to mine, but I mean, I, I walked in and I was in there for about five seconds before I left. It was just completely perfect. It's such a great space, such a great location. And I just love, I love Cituette. I'm always down there meeting anyways, so it's, you know, it's just great.
Just a couple of questions. We didn't usually get a floor, uh, like a layout plan, which I did not save.
Oh, sure.
Um, a lot of that's helpful. Yeah, that would be, yeah, you still have to go through border health and all of that, right?
Yeah, so I've already been talking with border health. They, uh. They have, until we do the final for everything looks good with the plan, uh, happy with how everything is laid out.
Uh, and remind me, I think there's only two parking spots in that, just two residence spots.
None of those spots are permitted, unfortunately.
So all of your customers will have to park or park by, or on the street if you're. Okay, uh, yeah, that's something obviously to be mindful of.
Yeah, I was a bit, you know, a bit concerned at the beginning when I was looking through the list. I was hoping I would get one of those spots just to give you to pop in, you know, make up a cake or grab a coffee, but that, that wasn't to be. Um, I mean, every time I'm down there, which is all the time, I never have a problem with carpets, so I can't think that that, that doesn't present an issue for people.
Yeah, people find a way to get to.
Yeah, they'll find ways to get the things good.
Um, no, it's more being mindful of those residence spots.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's more for reminding your customers.
Yes.
Um. Very exciting. Uh, we were suspended when our bakery left. And it's like a whole, um.
I know. Uh, I'm really excited to apply their video, so, uh, it'll be ready for us, so.
And what, uh, I'm.
Um, I'm very hopeful that we can, we can be open for the holidays, but that, that may not happen. That may not happen.
Great.
Thank you.
Questions?
No questions. Great.
The, uh. We have a bakery.
Oh, yeah.
The English, sure, done. The, I mean, the one practice thing, and you've, eh, welcome to Cituette.
Thank you so much.
Um, this is you, I was still involved, especially that I was down on Front Street with local events, sports TV, making houses. We really would encourage you to, uh, be a member of the community and talk about it. Strangers become guests, uh, you know, guests become friends and friends become like family, and that's still just kind of, uh, just looking forward to it.
You guys have been amazing so far. I mean, I went to the Chamber of Commerce, all social, and I just could not believe the community that you have going on here, uh, for the workers' climate. It's just fantastic.
Oh, good.
A motion.
Yes, move the slideboard, vote to approve a new 2023 common license to meet, uh, Kitchen LLC, subject to board cal.
Hi, Ms. Canfield, second. Second, Harrison, what was the paper? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Welcome.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I wish I could keep that, but my son's forever.
No, next to it, next to it. Thank you so much.
All right.
A lot of fun stuff.
We are for the moment ahead of schedule. But we will be calling up Sean McCarthy and Kevin Capery. Maybe. Uh, okay. Volty waste rates and boat disposal fines.
You want to bring the fun stuff?
Which have been connected in the past. That's the only reason disposal. That, that the boat be. Thank you for changing the board. We have some to talk.
And so in, in your packet, it's brown. I have a special request to update the transportation's color.
It's brown here.
It, it's not going to work until you can bloom with the, uh, the waters. Want to make, I want to make sure I have.
Okay.
So. We just wanted to bring this before you because we said we would come back after the C and D rate was, uh, contract was renewed, which you did at the last meeting. That was a 7.7% increase over the prior contract of 130, it went to 145 dollars. Um. So we wanted to talk to you about reflecting that in the C and D race itself. It's, so short recycling is going back over to look at, um, different rates. So what we have right now with wind waste, who's our current provider, is, um, just a $100,000 contract, not to see. So depending on what comes down to trust or recycling cooperative, if possible, might be better. I'm not necessarily thinking it's going to be any better than that. Um, as you know, uh, last year from the financial documents that we provided to you, it was a revenue deficit in transportation. And normally what happens when there's a revenue deficit in an enterprise fund is general fund has to make up for it. In this case, be, uh, more aware of it, and Sean was very good while monitoring his expenses and, um, saved enough of his budget. So that the revenue deficit is offset by the expense turnbacks, so there was no, um, detriment to the general fund. Uh, right now, the, well, fiscal 23, at least, the bulky ways to see the revenue lines were almost $400,000 less than projected. The tonnage remains, um, being depressed. Overall, the enterprise fund misses revenue projections for about 30,000, and that's the same number you made a call that we looked at special town meeting a few weeks ago and reused their budget. Because we knew we weren't going to take any same level of revenue. Uh, that reduction may not have been enough. We may have to revisit that in the spring. Unfortunately, we had already approved the fiscal 24 budget before fiscal 23 closed, so we didn't know how bad revenue deficit 23, we would have made adjustments at the April town meeting. Um. The issue of defining C and D bulky waste tonnage is still not clear to any of the 3A's or to Jim. Uh, it could be from several different things. There were major storms in 2013, 15, and 18, if you're all aware, as well as 2012. Um, and that created debris, which would have increased our tonnage in Europe. You, you'll see our slide a little bit that has the yellow in, uh. 2015 storm around was on there. The pandemic may also contribute with people being home or being down here in seasonal homes to do more work, cleaning, hangs out. Um, so what we think at, at press tonnage may actually be normal tonnage, and we just had high tonnage in, in prior years. Uh, the other thing that, uh, Kevin thought of, which is giving valid is could be competition private haulers. We would just have people choosing, or contractors choosing the dumpsters, which don't come through the transfer station. So the tonnage is going somewhere else, it's just not here.
So, so where, where does a private hauler normally go?
So a lot of them go right down to Brantree, and they might go to Brantree and go to that big transfer station that, that's GMS. Or they might be some disposal stations they do.
So why would they go there?
Well, because we don't take, we don't take commercial waste necessarily. It just might be easier, my thought, for a contractor. Instead of stacking it in a truck, just leave a dumpster there, place it all in the dumpster and haul it right off for a simple cost. It might be cheaper to have, you know, say, you leave it there for three days instead of your truck die out.
I was just like. I don't know if I've thought of, talked about, because we have a few private haulers here in Cituette.
Yeah.
I, I'm embarrassed, I don't know this now, but. Do you even have an option if they wanted to dispose? Like, was it Cedar Point, private haulers, wherever, do they?
Up to the vanquisher's station.
Yeah. Would that be?
I mean, we're trying to get extra tonnage or just more revenue dumpster. Yeah, typically not. We don't want to, you know, we might be in violation of our permit, the fee. Uh, for taking private haul materials, one thing to take something from a contractor that's working in Cituette on somebody's house. And you help dispose of it so that they can save costs or. But it's another thing to advertise and have dumpsters and be turned in for that type of, that type of stuff, I think.
Yeah, I was trying to think like a Cituette company or a house in Cituette they could use. I'm just trying, I'm just trying to find revenue for it.
No, I'm just, I'm just good.
Yeah.
It couldn't be problematic without permit, I think. Because then it could, it could change our haul-in status, our, our transfer station status.
Yeah. Ocean, I'm just first.
Sorry, and I'm not the expert, you know, I don't recall exactly, but that's just, that'd be my immediate.
Um, additional budget adjustments for subsidies may be needed in the April 2024 special town meetings. Just kind of a shout out for that. Um, I just looked at the revenue we had at the end of October and we're $3,000 ahead this year than last year. Which is good, but we were in deficit last year. So. Right now, we're kind of like teetering in that we could have a problem area, um, or we could pick up. Just have to wait and see what the tonnage does. Especially where C and T is the biggest provider of revenue for the enterprise fund. Um. It, it's basically something we rely on for that. This is that lovely, um, graph that, uh, table that nobody likes to look at, but it gives you a good idea of what the average tonnage is and where we're sitting. So if you look where the red arrows are, you can definitely see that we're, if you look, it's down compared to the three, four prior years above it. I mean, just looking at February, we're like half of what we used to be, but if you start looking at 2015. It looks a little familiar. So it's kind of, it's hard to pin down exactly why the tonnage is off. Um, but also we're having that savings in the haul-in costs, so that's enabling us to reduce the, um, budget. That way, rather than, uh, increase rates on everything. Uh, this is what's happening with our neighbors. We always show you this when we're doing a rate presentation. Uh, Marshfield is, charges less than us for their commercial, um, debris, but they don't take boats. So we are one of the ones that does, that do take boats. And Cohasset doesn't accept, um, if the C and D is resident owned or originated with B, they won't allow outsiders to kind of, um, dump. Um, Dexter is 600, um, Hingham's 320. As I recall from reading the Hingham sign, they also don't allow people to come in and come out of that. Know why that chimes when I get that? That's interesting. So what we're.
Everybody around Marshfield.
Hmm?
Everybody around.
It's possible.
I'm pretty sure.
That's true. Yeah. Well, that's.
That's right.
So right now, our rate is 15 cents a pound. We're 300 dollars a ton. We're proposing to offset a 7.7% increase. Uh, is 17 cents per pound or an increase in two cents, which would make it 40 dollars extra a ton or 340 a ton. This would be effective 12, 15, or choose to do it whenever they see fit to make that change. The potential revenue based on the prior year tonnage for the same period would be about $17,000, so starting to chew up that $30,000 deficit. Uh, since the boat disposal fee, um, is tied to the C and D rate. Proving that the boat disposal fee just be trued up to that, so it'd be 320 a ton, would be 340 dollar minimum. Less than square, the only ones who are taking boats in the general area, that's. More important than market on that one. Uh, the other thing that we're suggesting to you is the transportation of household waste contract. We awarded that in July. We told you that we kind of had no time. We were told that they weren't going to pick up our waste anymore, so we walked over contractor C gas and for the separate transportation. You awarded a three-year contract at the time, but the document that was signed did not specify the three years. It just applied the rate and let the rate go up. So we don't know if you want to reconsider your boat. And we'll put, and if you do so want to reconsider your boat for three years, you can put the contract out to bid and see if we can get some savings on that. Um, and then we'll make any, uh, necessary budget adjustments in the spring town meeting and have our normal June 2024 rate examination to see if anything has been affected and helping the enterprise funds, hopefully all help.
All right, could you explain that part about the, uh, putting it back out to bid? So.
So when you awarded the contract, um, you awarded a three-year contract, but.
But there's a time period.
It, what, what was signed was just a given rate and a rate. It doesn't specify a time. It just says that it's subject to increase by three, three, the consumer price index, and don't begin with a sale. Um, so that would be something we would consider. If, if, you know, that's important to think for avenues to save costs before we start saying, let's increase rates. Uh, with the bulky ways, we are now, we discussed the math, and if a contract went up, then the rate should go up. If when that central, um, recycling cooperative, when their bid comes back, we get some type of a giant, um, break on it, you could always bring the price back down. I don't know if we're directly competing with Marshfield or not. We, we well could be that they're taking it there, or it could just be those dumpsters.
Questions?
Yeah, I want to understand the boats a little bit more. What's that price for? Am I, is it a mess?
Yeah.
Somewhere?
It's $340, um, minimum.
Three.
Is it on the?
Here, this is their price list.
Oh, it's.
Three.
Oh, it's, it's currently 340?
It's currently 300.
Oh, it's currently 300.
Which is the same as the C and D bulky waste per ton. So it's a $300 minimum or $300, or $300 a ton if it's one of the.
Right, how many?
How much do we get?
Yeah, I'm sorry, how many boats?
How many boats?
I mean, four or five, maybe half a dozen.
If, if that, and they're equally small or.
Yeah.
It's a lot of work because the guys have to break it from up, they have to bend the dumpster and, and, you know, and type 40 dollars in some boats. It's more or less.
Yeah. It's kind of, it's not a lot of money. And it sounds like a hassle. Not a boat with no, like.
No water.
What if they got like internal gas? Do you want to do two, or is that a separate, that's a lot, right?
Correct.
Okay.
No fuel or oil.
No fuel.
Yeah.
I'm just, it's not a lot.
Yeah, no, it's not.
It's not going to move unneatably, even organically. What's the balance of the enterprise fund account?
Well, they had retained earnings of just over $500,000. But it's, they're not going to have that next year. Not with the way the revenue's coming in.
What's projected deficit by next year again?
Hopefully nothing. Fiscal 24. For fiscal 25, there is projected deficit with no budget right now.
Right, and it's not half a million dollars.
No, it's not half a million dollars, and in, when Jim gets to this presentation, he's got a number of things that he's hoping will come to pass. Throughout fiscal 24, that will negate that deficit. Including, including potentially putting this contract out to bid and getting a better rate.
Yeah.
That's what I thought. Seems like, uh. Um, the only other question I had is I. I, I just didn't understand Hingham's numbers. So they don't.
I don't understand Hingham's numbers very well.
I know, explain this to me. So they have the same kind of transfer station you do. They don't charge the residents per sticker for the first one.
But you do have to study your first form and get it.
That's the best.
Well, there's.
Yeah, so how does that?
You have to provide your license, your registration. Which they take pictures of, which I object to a moment too. Uh, but if you do it online, you have to copy the whole insurance. Yeah, I don't know.
So how do they, it must be, they must subsidize that.
It's not, it's not an enterprise.
Yeah.
And the other thing is with Hingham, it's a much bigger area, and they have baleers, so. They give a better price for their recycling material because they sort it, they sort it better, they use more manpower, they bail it differently. And, uh.
And they actually hold on to it for a while and wait for the market to adjust and then sell it. So they, they are able, the facility that they have there, they're able to hold. Regenerate a little more revenue.
But they're filling the pinch as well because they also, they never charged for white goods, mattresses, and that, and now it's all E based.
Thank you.
Bert, I'm going to speak of three or a hundred and five dollar permit stickers. We're pretty constant on sales, we're still going up a little bit, or anyone dropped off today?
I had a look at the numbers, but the revenue is, is consistent.
All right. I mean, yeah, you know, I mean, my touchdowns with the nine dollars are. Whatever, I think you're right, it's probably to. Revenue somehow.
And if we, if we know that we're going to remain depressed in tonnage, sounds so in her rip.
Depressed in tonnage.
Depressed with touch. We know our budget numbers are going to stay low, then we can decree, continue to decrease the budget. And that'll be one of the, that we could look at, but there's a spike. We've been waiting for this to like come back to normal, and now it seems like this may be near the normal. So if that's the case, then the haul cost can also be reduced.
All right, and so we're asking for, to go from fifteen cents a pound. Seventeen cents a pound, which is still a fabulous deal compared to private haul or other. But just for the C and D. Could it just go to C and D?
Well, in fact, most people, they.
So if you come in with a backup truckload of stuff, you know, you got house on the front, it might, people just increase by two cents. Comfortable with that? Comfortable with that?
Maybe is that in conjunction with putting this on our contract?
Yeah, we're asking that, yeah, we talked about that.
I think we should do that anyways.
I think that should be our.
Okay.
Or can we do that without increasing the rates now?
The, the bid would be for the next fiscal year. We're gonna make it up for this fiscal year, so.
And we're allowed to do that because it wasn't, I'm just.
The way the contract that was actually actually.
Do you want to make a motion tonight on that, or?
You want a motion tonight, yes, no?
No, I think we just want to go.
And there's no rest of us. I guess if you go to the bid, we don't have to take it, we just.
Well, yes and no. You go out to bid, you run the rest of, everybody including, you're kind of bidding higher than what he's currently charging. And then you have to take whatever's below spin, do the most higher than what you're going to.
And do you get somebody that gives us the service that we get now with the trailers, we deal with the service? You know, you don't want to get somebody that can't. Repeat with. Or, or only has three dumps to say, because sometimes at Christmas, we need extra haulings and everything else, so. Risk, it is pretty.
Both, or the rest of the board here. But that's, it seems like a line of this guy. All right, you have motions on about the race and then the boat disposal fee.
Sure, move to increase the C and D bulked waste rate from fifteen dollars, fifteen cents a pound. Or three hundred dollars a ton to seventeen cents a pound, three forty a ton effective December first twenty twenty three. And move to increase the boat disposal fee three hundred per ton or a minimum of three hundred to three forty a ton or a minimum of three forty effective December first twenty twenty three.
Canfield, Sarah. Sarah's had a call with a favor. It's Dennis. Thank you.
All right, so just a thought on that with the haulers, you know, that I, that I did bring that up. It might be something maybe to be qualified or five haulers and explicit prices of them because it is trash. You know, because we don't want to get. Somebody that can't, doesn't have the equipment to do the work and still tries to do the bid.
I think you just print the inappropriate for the next term qualification. And take that bridge.
We can, we can deal with it either. Thank you very much.
You may see Sean and I, Kevin back at their next meeting with all of the respective contracts. So Sean's eating everybody up for the lowest, lowest rate he can get. We like zeros.
Yeah.
It's not like school, we like zeros.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look up, we have.
No, just a quick question. I just wondered if the, the residents in situ had decided that they can stay on the trash if there's some bear off, is it that maybe done?
I would have to confirm with the guys, I haven't heard as many complaints as I was hearing from the guys earlier. I'm sending it down because it's still the way it was, they'd be. They'd be letting me know about it, who's down there and around the side, and nobody brought it up, so. I guess.
What I'm mentioning is that we remove barrels from some of the hub offices as we do every year. And there was a period where people just said, well, a barrel needs to be here, and they would just leave garbage. And so we were very hopeful that the residents realized that maybe that wasn't being a very good resident practice, so.
Now, just remember that the same guys that got the soccer fields and you all out of the work, picking up trash, just got a soccer field and grass. We were down four guys in that pot, so the more kind of thanks, the less work, as many happens to the fields.
I, the decision was a big decision, just shocked me that people would be that disrespectful of our town, their town.
Thank you very much. Well, on happier news.
Yes.
We are in a move to do some interviews. We are, there's, there's three different committees, Health, Bylaw Review Committee, and Mordecai Lincoln. Mordecai Lincoln Property Committee, there are more folks that are interviewing besides tonight, so just so folks know likely that. Those votes probably won't happen tonight till we hear from everybody. But Mordecai Health and the Bylaw Review. Please. So with that, we're posting Shay. How are you, and then if you don't mind, give us a quick second. Bye. Sorry to be key, there's one, I heard one over there. So. How are you? Just a name and address for the record, and just tell us about yourself and. Why the board helps, why are you here?
My name is Alison Shay. I live at. Six fifty Allen. Been a resident here for thirty years. Thirty years, possibly thirty years. Greatest chiropractor ever, evolved and educated here. I feel a deep connection to this community and. The board just serving the heart of the community health. And I, you know, I'm also a nurse over the first, for many years. And I think I contribute a lot to, you know, to the vision. And, you know. Hopefully collaborate with others and create such a good. Healthy, happy community.
Oh, yeah, so your resume is stamping. Thank you so much for raising your hand. Have you, have you been able to talk to the health director and all, or to look into sort of the. Kind of the curve and all the things that more than health is responsible for?
No, there's no, there's very common. And I am pretty complex job, but responsibilities involved. And there's a lot of difference, you know, you're working, you're looking at health prevention and wellness. And you're also making sure that people follow policy. You know, to have policy, you know, I should have curled it, if it was a body work that needed to be done around that. You know, secret virus, full. Infection prevention and, you know, flu shots, I think there's a lot that it entails.
Yeah, obviously, that's your background. The other piece is the, you know, septic and.
Yes.
Food services.
Exactly, yes, I, I'm aware of all of that, yes.
You're comfortable with those roles as well?
I, I am. You know, I may not have all the answers, but I have there. There's lots of resources to.
Girl set. Let's see. Cubs Medical Center, Boston Medical Center.
Yes.
New England Baptist Hospital, worked in the Mocley, Ingleberry O R. East Newton O R, Menina Prama O R. Assistant Nurse Manager. Jordan Hospital. Background, enrolled mental health nurse practitioner. Again, we sit all the time, but it is fascinating quality of people. That step up and volunteer, so I can only say thank you. Say overqualified, it's amazing. It is, I mean.
Well, and it's like it's desperately needed, we need board health, people don't have a forum right now. It's great, so thank you.
Thank you so much for stepping up.
Yeah, and we got to talk about some communication with the board health does, talking about, I mean, it's, it's gonna be.
I would be looking forward to that. So it's something I really wanted to.
Well, I would love, again, if we can do these. Again, the Mordecai Lincoln ones, we can't do until the year everybody, but I'd love, we're going to do a motion from all your ears.
It's way at the end.
I will fill a bus fair and say. If you haven't checked out some of the past meetings to make sure we're gonna go through that.
I may be true, right?
Do you want to read the motion for you?
Please.
Move to appoint Alison Shay to the Board of Health for a term of three years until a successor is named.
So who?
Moved by Ms. Canfield, so I have a second.
Okay.
Harrison, will you ever say aye?
Aye.
Welcome to the board.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you guys very much, I really appreciate it. I'm looking forward to it, so.
Great.
Thank you, again, this, I mean, we were a very good hand.
You know, staff, I mean, we know the places she worked, I might get that emotional.
But that is, the Baptist is still like the place to go for their, you know. Need replacement for parts right now.
Absolutely the best.
Right.
Such a nice, we got parts community.
In surgery. It is.
Yeah.
It's fabulous.
They met there one day.
I will send a question.
Okay, that's.
All right. Looking for Jerry Genofsky, so the Bylaw Review Committee, come on out. These are next. Just give us one quick second, we are going to tab seven. How are you?
I'm well, quite good.
If you wouldn't mind, just the record, just naming address.
My name is Jerry Genofsky, I live in fourteen Maryland, around the city.
All right, and just tell us about yourself and why. Why the Bylaw Review Committee?
Okay, well, I've been a resident for over thirty years. Here when our kids were in fourth grade, still live in the area. I'm recently retired, I've been wanting to get involved with the town for a while. And I saw this opportunity, the committee opening for the committees, and I went through the list and a Bylaw Committee interest. You know, I think they'd probably help out with that.
So now's the time.
Yes.
And you've got a background, electrical engineer.
Electrical engineer, so I've been a high-tech professional for my whole career. Electronics engineer for a number of years, and I became a software engineer, worked at, I was insulting for many companies for a while, and I got into software and I worked for Clean Partners. Which was, which was a local thing, which was great, because being a high-tech professional, there was a lot of commuting from dinner. Worked there for thirteen years and recently retired, got a lot of time on my hands now. Like to get involved with the town, meet people around the town.
So this is, thank you so much, and really appreciate you, like. Chair was saying, Court News, The Post, and all these great people. So Bylaw is its own weird animal. Because it's, it's policy, it's, it's going through. And, you know, assessing what's on the books and does it make sense for even that sort of thing now. Have you, in your work, have you done work with policy and, and that sort of document review?
I have not.
And, and what interests you about that process?
Well. I have always had interest in, in law. It's like, like reading through laws, like local laws that we have, I was just kind of always interested. Which is why this one thing that I chose. To be part of the community.
That's, it's great. I am also very excited about this, but it's, it's thrilling to me that people have that same interest. And you had the time, so this is just restarting. It's on the tails of finishing up a charter review, where we identified a number of things during that process that. Needed to be fixed, that really didn't belong fixed in the charter, belonged in the bylaws, so. We'll be starting from the foundation of the work that has been done.
It's just hasn't worked out before.
The charter was just recently renovated, renovated. Remised. And in the course of doing that work over two years. Remarkably, a lot of things were, yes, that's not right, but. It's much easier to change a bylaw than it is to change the charter, and so some things you don't want cast in stone, and that's why the Bylaw Review. Is going to start now tackling those things that need to be addressed that aren't as permanent in it, so. Have you had a chance to look at any of our bylaws and online or?
I haven't, I started reading the charter, I'm, I guess we're all twenty things that we get, but.
Okay, great, well, I thank you again for coming forward and your interest in this committee.
Yeah, right, I mean, it's not exactly what you've done, but it's gonna have the. Oh, I'm, so I, I think it would be a great.
I can tell you why he's gonna be moderate of course. This is what we need to brag about. So you know JavaScript, right?
Yeah.
Visual basic, you know, so you possibly.
And that, and that helps why.
It is, the attention, the attention to detail.
Okay.
I mean, it's like, I looked at this first one I saw and I said. Roughly. You're gonna have the attention to detail to be able to, the patience. To be able to look through some of the bylaws to make sure, like, there's connections, why is this? We're not connected to over there, this is more than we know, this is right up. This is right around it. So you know, you didn't start it, did you?
Oh, I, I suspect that I would have. Make sure you're getting into.
Jim, well, I'm comfortable. You have a motion.
I can read the motion.
Sorry, Mike.
Sorry, it's a Jeffrey.
I can find it myself.
Jeffrey, I go with Jeffrey.
Move to appoint Jer, Jerry Genofsky and Lincoln Hahnemann. Who was previously interviewed to the Bylaw Review Committee for a term of three years until a successor is named.
Second? No, wait, someone, sorry.
Moved by, what was that? Hold on, we're going?
Wait a second. I thought, I would, Lincoln did apply?
Lincoln applied, and Lincoln served for two years on the Charter.
Oh, really, I messed up.
And, um, I was hardly recommended, then he continued.
Oh, yeah, no, I just might have missed, I wasn't here for that interview, so. Yeah, you. Second, okay, second.
All right, moved by, where are we going, Ms. Canfield? And seconded by Harrison, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome, welcome to board, all right.
So it is just, Lorraine will give you the details, but, uh, because we are just populating this group, um, we have to have a forum in which we are close to getting any.
Right, so I read like five to seven, is that what, for, for the, for the Bi-Log group?
For the number of people, I have to actually.
It's five, it's five members is what it says.
Five members.
It's what it says here, five members, for you.
So we have, we put this next person, we have another person that needs to interview, so we'll have four.
Yeah.
So.
Enough for a meeting.
I think we'll have enough for a meeting. Yes.
Right, well, with these three appointments, we have a forum.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so we, that's, that's been the run, I couldn't actually start kidding till we had it fully populated, but, uh, we'll, uh, look forward to it. It'll be hard to plan.
All right, great, all right. Well, thank you, well, thank you. All right.
We'll be sending you some paperwork.
All right. Yep. James, up here for the Morgue Head, one hand.
That's great, Tracy. Now, I started.
Uh, again, we're not voting on your stuff, then, sorry. Okay. Um. Just leave these up there, everybody, so, anyway, but, um, I think I know why, I know why.
Okay, uh, I've been interested in the Morgue Head Lincoln housing since I moved to City twenty-three years ago, it's relatively new. Uh, I bought Bi-Log and saw a son of the great, great grandfather of Abraham Lincoln, who was a historian, so he traded me. Uh, and as a kayak, I used to, two, also two, two of them ago for, if the ties are right, I can get into the, the code there, the bottom book meets. See the back part of the property, so very familiar with the property, even when the forced sale sign came up, there was some concern, who was gonna purchase the, the property? Uh, and was glad, obviously, that the town can either wisdom to purchase it. Uh, and then, as a member of the historical commission, uh, we can clearly think about what we're gonna do with the property. Uh, which is gonna be a difficult, I suppose you've seen, discussion we've had previously, right, about that. Um, the risk at the moment, I had some confusion about what I'm actually applying for. Uh, because there are three seats, one for the historical commission, one for the conservation commission, and one for facilities. Uh, and the assumption was that Doug Smith, Chair of the Historical Commission, for the Historical Commission, but he's decided that he just doesn't have the time to do it. So, you know, this weekend, I said, you're interested in representing a historical commission? I'm moving, uh, but I, so I applied earlier, knowing that, with a large position, uh, on the committee.
And he, he can certainly do a dual role as well.
As a liaison as well?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that was gonna be my question.
Yes, we've done that before.
So we have, the way it's.
No, unfortunately, I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, the way that the charters work, because it's obviously brand and commission, is seven positions, including those three, and liaisons from those committees, but we can double up it. Yeah, that makes sense, okay.
Right, I mean, I don't care whoever is.
Well, liaison doesn't have a vote in the member desk, so. That's, um, okay, great. Um, and what are your?
So you are? So we're not sure if you're, if you're, you're going for the at-large open, not for the historical commission, right?
Well, you do both.
You do both. Uh, making the assumption that Doug Smith was going to be a historical commission member. Uh, he decided.
So we all have to decide that. Yeah.
That's right.
You just wanna spot them.
You just wanna, right, DMX, I got it. Okay.
Yeah, I think maybe the sound would be something. The chair of the foundation. The A songs are usually appointed by the committee.
Correctly, usually, not by the.
Correct, that's correct, Susan.
Yeah.
That's my understanding, is the Star Commission will appoint.
A point.
In the under.
And that's what I did.
And it was clearly my understanding that this is interesting.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Uh, there's not, we got it.
All right.
Okay, so.
James.
All right, so that was, so we, as Chair said, we're not gonna be voting, but that's the case, then. We wouldn't be voting on your membership, I mean, be appointed by the commission.
Yeah, the chairs of each one of these commissions should tell us who's the liaison, tell, say who's the liaison.
No, this is a membership, not the, like, not, it's a different role, that's what's confusing, is these are voting members, not just straight liaisons, right? It's not seven plus liaisons.
Yeah, it should be where it is.
Yeah.
I'll have to go back.
We have to, we have to.
This is why we're not voting tonight, uh, we wanna make sure we get a proper. Yeah, there's a historic conservation facility. I know they're not, yeah, those are not supposed to be the A songs, like, it's a great.
But there's one way to say everything, depending on how it's written, so we need to go back. We can argue about that, but I can.
Correct.
More so, we'll get back to that, to the actual Morgue Head, okay? Property. Just because it's, we need to have more discussions in town, what, as of today, what is your vision for the property?
Uh.
I know we changed, I'm not trying to alter.
Not, I'm not proponent, we certainly, you can get it, and we, the best job we can in historical property, we get that education. Piece to it about the history of Cituit through Morgue High Lincoln and the mill. As our example of the economy of the town in the early days and, uh, it's, you know, the Lincoln piece could be taken, run down the road with it, uh, as much as we want. Uh, because Lincoln's coming out of the walls and, and Hingham, but it's not the family related to Abraham Lincoln. Uh, Samuel Lincoln, one of the first settlers in Hingham, is Morgue High Lincoln's father. And, uh, that's the branch of the Lincoln, most of the Lincolns in Hingham, they'll come out of that branch, so Benjamin Lincoln, the general, Hingham. Historical society just bought, Benham Lincoln, the house was just a tacky piece of property. Uh, it's not any relationship with Abraham at all. Uh, so we have, we have that, a connection. Uh, so definitely would be, would I did emphasize that a little, a little bit. Uh, although Abraham Lincoln, I don't think understood who his relatives were at the time when he was, uh, living. So, um, that piece, uh, and again, the property's been there since, I don't know if the house was really built in the sixty, ninety, but somewhere around. Uh, just, most, unthrough the history of the town, and again, that little mill that he set up in Morgue High Lincoln's mill was kind of special, you, you need the way the piece set it up. Uh, so there's a constant education opportunities. And then it's just an amazing piece of property, every time I drive up the driveway, I see, uh, a wedding tent, a wedding tent on the town there, such a beautiful spot. But, I mean, that's another possible road, that's a lot of work. Uh, and then there's the sign, we're getting interested. Uh, outside of, we go, build it into a, it's, uh, it could be an art studio, it could be a rehearsal space for musicians, it could be a meeting space, it could have great potential in the summer, it's in pretty good shape. Uh, the whole barn thing is another issue. Uh, that's, most of the history of the house can be a separate piece of property, uh, separate from the house itself.
Right.
Uh, but the whole mill thing is also another opportunity for education too. Uh, and then there's the recreational piece. And I've been, I see picnic tables up there for people, come up, uh, paddle to the property, get out, have a picnic lunch on top of the hill there and walk around. So you see, an opportunity for, for your life's recreation, a little trail, not a lot abandoned, a trail or whatever. Uh, something like, I don't know, religion, I, I would just take to see it, it's a great opportunity, it could be a gym in the town. It could be a big boss of tower, a lighthouse, and so with some force, and it's a house, it's a tower or a lighthouse. Uh, it would be best, you know, one of the oldest things we have, uh, you know, sort of in having power.
Right.
It's just a, a gym, like, we should watch the opportunity to make it, just.
Couldn't agree more.
Questions?
Thank you for that.
We, we're close to Halloween, I was asked this question, it's on the internet. It's listed, is that property haunted? It is, it's listed.
I haven't seen.
It's listed as haunted.
As one of the most haunted places in the nation. Is that true? Something got happened there? You heard the story?
Yeah.
All right. You can move along. All tourism.
Ah, yeah.
What was that?
I didn't hear your voice.
Oh, so it's tourism, tourism.
Oh, yeah.
All right, well, thank you, I think we're gonna make, you're gonna figure all this out tonight, uh, not tonight, we're gonna figure it all out. Get everybody else, then you just fly in and straighten this committee out.
So my other concern is, uh, and there's only two of us here tonight. Uh, generate interest in the committee. I know from the website, uh, you're part of an email system that you get, but I'm not sure how many people know that, because I'm very surprised that the butters aren't interested. Like, somebody should contact us, they were here.
They were here.
Have a need to go, express interest and have some background to see, just about preservation.
That's true.
And I hope it could be contacted, I don't even think all this, as a committee is organized, uh, because they, you need neighbors to be.
Right.
It's need to be, it's the most ideal, uh, management session.
That will be, we will certainly get the word out more. Sure.
I can send a note up to the butters, it's not a problem.
Yeah, that'd be great, all right, well, thank you, and, um,
All right, thanks.
John, how are you?
Very good.
See, with your.
Hi, Jim.
Hi, hi, how are you?
Thanks for coming here.
Thanks for coming, good to see you.
Our wife, I'm your official officer.
Thank you, everyone.
I love, and just to add, Nathan, for the record, even though I don't know you, I can see you.
Okay. And why, and gone later, five hundred and forty-six, actually, I've been a resident in popular here since nineteen eighty. Um, I originally applied thinking that I would go for one of the applause, and I think I probably would be very well qualified, you know, much remember. I thought that lacks the Star Commission. It was decided that Jim was gonna be Doug's appointment to this committee. If it ends up that absolutely nobody on the Star Commission wants to represent the Star Commission, as you already said, six among half a dozen of the other. But I'd suggest that we proceed looking at me as a, at large. Um, I have a strong experience in history. I've done historical research at the doctoral level, I've published in history, much of Massachusetts history. The time I was in high school, I had a deep interest in seventeen, eighteen century Massachusetts history, particularly public accounting. Um, I have served on the Natick, that's the historic commission, several years, and also their historic district study committee. The artwork ended up in the commission, two historic districts, and one that encompasses downtown center of Natick, the ups of Natick, yeah. Um, I, you're a, description of what you were looking for, you wanted someone who had experience, um, in fundraising, grantsmanship. I have a career in public higher education, it goes from nineteen seventy-eight to two thousand and ten, I'm fired. Um, I have had strong experience of going out to grants and going out to grants for the start from the base ship. Um, at the University of Hawaii, we gave, we received a gift of a bank builder, which we then renovated into classrooms in a small business, we could bear. Um, at State University of the York, Vice President from Administration Finance, we occupied Fort Skyler, Fort Skyler is a sister of Fort, you're probably familiar with Fort Warren in Costa Harbor. There was a series of harbor defense ports created in eighteen fifties, and Skyler was one of them. Um, it was decommissioned at the end of World War One, and Governor Frank Dela Rossburg gave it to the State University of the Arts Maritime College, which is a sister institution to what's, plus its bed of mass maritime, as their campus. So when I was there, we had to maintain that antique port in historic and very large maritime museum inside of it. Several buildings, several wood frame buildings, including the one that my wife turned and I were living in, that I bid eighteen hundreds wood frame buildings. Um, we did a major renovation of Steve Heath, among other projects. Um, I was also at these, uh, I was the Director of Budget, Capital Planning at the Massachusetts School of Higher Education. And one project that I got deeply involved in was, uh, Middlesex Community College. Um, had an old federal period mansion in Kansas, they do that, they're built about eighteen ten. And they partnered with something called the Zion Showcase, which was a market. And what they did is pay for the stabilization, update, redecoration of the building in exchange for the, the college and the state allowing them to come in periodically and use it for the background for adoptions. I mean, we're all about to get an avalanche of clothing catalogs for Christmas.
It's a little scary.
Look closely, you just might see the mansion up at the Middlesex Community College, but, yeah, it's beautiful. Um, we are going to have to find revenue stream for the Lincoln House. I don't think that we should expect a budget of Cituit pay for the initial stabilization and upgrade break and then the ongoing maintenance. We need to find a revenue stream. We may, we could use a partner partner. Another possibility is a higher end thought, that you might find a corporation or a university that wants to use it occasionally as a small conference center. And, you know, and pay a lease, pay a fee for its use, and then you have a revenue stream, you have a source of money through which you can renovate it. I think what they did at Middlesex, that general idea might be willer to support the Morgue High Lincoln House. Uh, another major project I got involved in, when I was at Florida Regents, is every year we had to put together the capital budget, I was the Director of the Capital Budget Process. And, uh, Worcester Technical Community College, you might have occupied the site of the Oswald Springfield. That was where most of the small arms of the Army, the other armed forces were made from seventeen ninety-five to nineteen sixty-five. Then it was given, the Middlesex, to, uh, Worcester Technical Community College, with the proviso that certain buildings would stay as museums, and the rest of them had to maintain their exterior appearance, which gets complex. So my role was working with them in presenting the capital budget proposal that went to the government, the legislature, and some Florida Regents. But I could heavily amount it. Um, Roxton Community. Roxton Community, I was a, um, Special Assistant to the President. Essentially the Vice President for Administration when I was there. And there is a very interesting federal house, and that came to be renovated into a halfway house. So I had that experience.
We know, you have, we know.
And you see it all in my residence.
Yeah, no, we've, we've known you for, for years, you have extensive background. Tell me why you love this property.
This property is, of course, a beautiful piece of property because of the land around, but the house itself was built in the mid sixteen hundreds and continuously occupied up until, obviously, recently, this five, six years ago. Particularly by my friend, um, who is my friend. And so it reflects the ongoing evolution of the home. I would be very much opposed to saying, oh, let's turn it back to the way it looked in seventeen twenty. I would like to morally preserve it as it's, because it shows the evolution, it's used as a house. You know, and what have we got, almost twenty, fifty years of history, more than that, it's pretty much, yeah. And that is very useful as a reflection of the history of houses and situations in houses in our country. Um, we, we should keep in mind, that's a resource for the nation. A Mordecai Lincoln probably has something in the range of eight million percenters, not kidding, in, in the United States. You know, I got all excited that I'm a descendant of the tenth great grandson of Nathaniel Tilden, so on six million other Americans, so I don't get to us. But now seriously.
We get some ten dollars.
Oh, yeah. Wow, that's a set.
That's like a nickel.
If you develop a Mordecai Lincoln, a friends Mordecai. I think you might be surprised how many people are proud that they obviously from Mordecai Lincoln have an interest in. And you could perhaps get some kind of annual ten dollars ahead from a surprising number of people. That should be examined as well. The house itself, I think, should be maintained somewhat like we maintain Percy Manning's home and the Cudmore House by the gate school. That it's open to the public several times a year, that it reflects, as I say, the ongoing history of that building over a couple of centuries. Um, another possibility that I've thought about is that has been a very historic and interesting site for milling. It isn't conceivable we could use the mill building as a small museum of the history of water power and water power mills. Um, if that's a possible site use for that building. I think the remaining building probably ought to be renovated as a residence. It needs to be resident individuals or individuals or maybe a family on site. I think that's very necessary for the security upgrade, updating and preservation of that, there be a resident person as there is at the lighthouse, and I believe there is at the Percy Manning House, so you need that. That would probably be the building. I know Don Lath was living there, I think, as recently as ten years ago in the nineties. It's, it would not be difficult at all to bring that building back into a decent living space. And it's not anywhere near as historic, it's the house itself or the mills. You have more questions?
No, these are Jack completely thought out plans and, I mean, it's gonna be complicated and they can bring your insight on, on suggestions of like a project, because it's, you know, we can't even figure out the committee right now. It's gonna be, uh, very.
I would say this, I've served on National Committee, the Library and Justice here, the Advisory Committee, which can just pray. I believe as a member of the public commission of committee, you, you should support the group. You don't come in with the argument style and your ideas and say, you're running the desk. You contribute some ideas and then you listen to the general discussion and build it to consensus. But I would submit, I have a lot of practical relevant experience bringing there on this. My mother's, I own a two hundred and fifty rooms. God knows since you are what.
Question?
I don't have a question, but I appreciate the discussion on the foundation. Because we sit up here and a lot of us want some needs, and this is a great opportunity for the town. But, um, not but, but and we have to figure out a pay.
Yep.
And that's.
I'm trying to try it on.
And I, I appreciate that discussion because I think that it's a big part of any sort of success with this. So thank you.
Yep.
I, I have no doubt that both of you love this property and are gonna be involved in this. Again, we're just not going to, because we're trying to figure everything out and don't want to mess it up and I'll wait for other, uh, or other members to make sure that we do it right, but I know both of you just adore that property or committed to it.
Exactly. My wife and I have, you know, moved over that house for decades. But it ever goes back on the market, kind of, I, there is.
There you go. There you go. Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks so much, thanks for coming in.
Sure, thank you.
Jack?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
Right.
This goes back to capital budget, which is bold, not as many.
On his surfback, Avery Lincoln actually has an older regular lease.
Please.
Yep, here, both children. Rock and still want to live. His grand, great grand, his grandson died in nineteen eighty five.
Well, that's really one of the last ones. Yes, he had this commission.
If I'm on the commission jacket, I'm gonna be buying it. All right, Nancy Paul, what's not golfing?
Yes, I will soon. But we haven't had a golf parakeet in front of the board for a couple of years now, so it was time for us to get some new golf carts. This is through a state contract that they see one one six. Be for nine new twenty twenty three easy go golf carts, and we will be trading in nine of ours dating from two thousand four to two thousand thirteen. The five year lease is a lease to own, and it would be eighty thousand nine hundred and eighty nine dollars and eighty cents.
I have this day, I enjoyed reading about that on this one.
National. Susan, any questions?
What happens to the whole?
Yeah, that, that was actually.
We created.
Trade equity. Oh, no, was that?
Yes, we have probably, I think, uh, in here is that mostly.
Like seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, right, the trade equity? Oh, it wasn't clear crowd, that was then attributed to the price.
It reduced the overall cost from the MSRP.
So that's where you get to that discounting sale price?
Yeah.
Okay. It didn't like, usually you see a like minus.
Yeah, it's different, who do we now write purchase, it would come down at the bottom.
Right.
Be taken off.
So that's how you get to the eight thousand five hundred and twenty four each? Is by reduce whatever that?
Yeah, they added in the trades.
They got something there.
And then we also get better of it on contract.
Ian, did you want the GPS? Uh, thanks for the golf, thank you. Do you experience a little more expensive?
How many yards F?
How far it was.
But we know apps coming with golf carts.
The, yeah. Right on my ball. MSRP.
And then.
Yeah, ball. Yeah.
So these are like leased after, like you don't, and how much does it, how long do we?
Will you lease them for five years and after that we own them?
Yeah, no, I get that we lease them, but then when, when they're at the, um, when they're at the golf course, people use them, but how long does it take for us to make this money?
You can know the actual cart fees?
Yeah, the fees and stuff.
I don't know that, I can put the actual cart clear off my, uh, top of my head, we haven't raised them in several years, weeks since pre-COVID.
There is still.
There is, we're gonna, golfers should be raising. I'm just wondering if we're gonna pay it back with the, with the fees, are we gonna pay it back with the, with the fees we're getting?
It went beyond the.
Course, it's in the we're in the black.
Yes, yes, the golf course is in the black, um, and it's actually doing very well, it's beaten last year at the end of October. But to your question about cart fees, I can.
Weekend versus weekday?
Oh, right, the rates are different.
Yeah, the rates are all over.
And I know, um, Ian did not want to raise rates at least last year, um, not have the discussion because the horse was off. Um, basically off limits for clubhouse runs a year, almost under renovation.
Yeah, yeah, I get it.
Um, our revenue last year from cart fees was three hundred and eleven thousand and the year before was three oh eight. And our rentals line is somewhere around seventy thousand.
That's pretty. All right, well, we're making the money. That is my question.
Yeah, that's good.
I'm not taking my software down.
No, so come back to ourselves. All right, then, then it works.
We should, that is a great, do we set the rates for you, and do we give them flexibility?
No, it's like you guys didn't set the rates, can we bring you a rare presentation?
No, I'm just wondering. At what? No, I, I don't know.
Yeah, we have an address.
They just beg the mustard. We had to do like, we got, we got like, this weekend, ten dollars, you know what I mean, like a special, you know, a special. We do reduce the rates after certain dates. When the winter season, now it's the rates. Yeah, that's, if you wanted to. November fifteenth, they drop. It's drop. All right. Any other questions? Comfortable with this or? Not a motion?
Wait, I have one more question. Sorry, one more question. Why wouldn't you pay it off earlier if we're in the black and we have three hundred thousand fees a year?
We haven't, we haven't had any leases for a few years.
Okay.
So we have been paying step off, we've done a lot of equipment purchases, um, a lot of the big bowers we've been doing.
Right.
But we've exhausted the, uh, retained earnings with the paying off to the debt.
Okay.
So we doesn't have enough to pay these off, but I, I agree with you, I would prefer we not lease it. Oh, right.
All right, okay. But I guess you always pay it off early.
Or just not lose activists, the last, the last thing you do.
Yeah. Okay.
That's the lease.
That's true, yeah. I'm not with this. Yeah. Okay.
Motion?
Move to award lease to PNC Equipment Finance for nine new twenty twenty three golf carts to finance providers at a total cost of eighty thousand nine hundred and eighty nine dollars and eighty cents.
Just give it over a second.
Second.
Sarah said, all those in favor, say aye, this is unanimous. Ready? Let's talk. Singular wireless.
Oh, sorry, I don't, he sat down next to you, so I was trying to find the agenda to see which way we're going. Okay, focusing. So behind us, where the cell towers, there are actually three ground leases. All coming up around the same time, so we did issue an RFP for the main tower lease, and that was awarded out to the local city of Monarch Vision Two last year. Uh, the two smaller leases, one for six hundred square feet of land and one for eight hundred and fifty square feet of land, uh, which house the communications equipment for two people who lease from Crown Castle, who own, who manages the tower, um, are up in twenty twenty four. We have been barraged from multiple entities, uh, including the Crown thing holders and then other entities about amending the lease, extending the lease, none of which we can do because the lease has run its term. So we have to put it back out to bid as procurement leases, I know it makes no sense, it's counterintuitive, there's a structure there. Who else would want to lease it? Happily, that was the case when we did put these two leases out to bid, we went way in advance. Um, one to stop the phone calls, and yes, it kept coming, but also because it took a really long time for the main tower, uh, lease to go through. And we had two responses. AT and T, who is one of the holders of the leases, and T-Mobile, who is the other, their companies both responded for their respective leases. So if you decided to move forward with either of these five, uh, ground leases, it would be basically renewing with the, um, companies that currently have it, just be giving them new leases. So the first one was the, um, eight hundred and fifty, see which one are they, the six hundred square feet uh, to new singular wireless, which is AT and T. Uh, they had, when we issued the RFP, they had expressed a desire to have a little bit more square footage, so they could put a generator on there. Uh, when they provided their proposal, they kind of bash away from them and went back to the six hundred square feet. What they did provide in their proposal was a six hundred and seventy five thousand one hundred and twenty four dollars, sixty one cent price proposal, that's for twenty years, so the lease would run for five years. And then it would be three five year renewals if the board, um, sees, sees fit to move forward. Currently, we're receiving two thousand thirty two seventy nine a month, or about twenty four thousand three hundred and ninety three annually. The RFP required that they take that into account, but they expected to receive at minimum what we were getting, or preferably more. Um, they did do that. The way that their price proposal works, as you saw in the documents that you were provided, is they're increasing their rent interval every year by three percent through the full twenty years. When we get to the other lease, they did it differently. So I don't have a lease for you to sign today. One of the things I wanted to talk to you about was the other entity that proposed amendments to our lease, which seemed reasonable when you read through the, when the case that I gave you a copy of that as well, I leave it in your pocket. And if you wanted us to make them similar between the two entities, that's what we would do, is finalize the, a lab release first and then go back to the new singular wireless with the amended language and say, this is what we want to move forward with. And I, you should have in the proposal, um, the, in the lease, the document, the application of the plans. There was a lot of stuff with it, plus the old leases, if you wanted to see it. It was very hard to kind of unravel these leases.
Has, has town council looked at these?
No, we wanted to see.
As the language?
Uh, this was the sample lease that went out, which is the same sample lease that was with the, um, other RFP, which town council had examined and approved. Um, this was all going on while town council, we weren't interviewing town councils.
Okay.
So before we would, um, move forward with the final lease, uh, but if you were comfortable with what this latter entity posed, um, we would then send that to town council. We finished the language with the entity, said it, town council made sure that it didn't have any problems and then move forward with it.
Yeah, I mean, the language is recognized and they have, it's not fair already.
Yeah.
I mean, it makes sense to me, but I'm not.
And whether or not you want to cease, I have, uh, I think the way that the sample lease is written is that, that this would replace the current lease, which doesn't expire, one of them expires and marginalism expires or that, or it may just take a set long to go all the way through the entire process with town council.
Okay. And then the issue of like, our lease ran out without, before, and then we had to re-get the thing. Is there any language that we, or some way we could not have that happen again? I don't know if it's just because it's such a long lease.
We have to procure it again.
Okay.
So, I, trust me, I, I don't ever.
Oh, in the twenty years, you have to procure it.
No, well, we're covered for twenty, this automatically rules unless there's some kind of a problem. Where there are current tenants and we haven't had an issue.
Gotcha.
We would hope that that relationship would continue. Um, but there's one other cell, the Monocle of the transportation, that's the next one to go. And after that, please don't have any more cell towers, it's like these, these are RFPs. Showing that I just want them to be over. So are you, I think, you don't, if you don't want to vote it today, at least provide us, provide you with a little bit of guidance as to whether I should continue to finalize this language with the entity that was the bidder for this particular lease.
My, my other question, is there any reason why we do think, like, the eight hundred and fifty square foot? It was five hundred thousand and six hundred square foot, it was six hundred and seventy five thousand, I mean. Is five hundred thousand and six hundred square feet, that's six hundred seventy five thousand, I mean. Just because there's equipment on there, is that, I mean, it's kind of weird.
Unless the, um, the, the six hundred seventy five thousand. They want to try to get additional land. They, they want to say, okay, when they submitted their response, they said, you know, we like the option of the addition. But like, we weren't planning on it. It's like, you asked us for it, so. Uh, I don't know. It, it also was unusual, uh, to see in that proposal that they did it three percent every year. Normally it's at three percent upon renewal. So I don't know if perhaps they made an error when they did their proposal. That's how the other, um. Entity did it was three years every five.
Well, it's more square feet, wouldn't it be more money?
Not necessarily. They also pay less. They are only one thousand nine seventy three fifty nine per month.
Gotcha, okay.
Uh, I, I was surprised because I opened the, the lower one first.
Yeah.
Another one this one year. Well, it, it's also the way they're calculating their payments. Um, there, the other, uh, lease, which is the T-Mobile one for eight hundred fifty square feet. Their price proposal is a three percent increase every renewals, for every five years, whereas they wrote, AT&amp;T wrote theirs every year three percent.
Yeah, I like the truth. I mean, we're, we're really talking twenty five thousand a year.
Yeah.
What are the towns? Yeah, I mean, just thankful we're getting anything out of that.
Yeah.
Um, is this great, are you guys comfortable? Is this kind of where we should be?
Yeah, this is, Nancy did a great job. This is a really complicated process. Very complicated, yes. Uh, I was surprised we get a basis as good as we did, because you all seen a lot of people abandoning the towers, going to the small five G and the small cells, so. Uh, I think this is a pretty good deal, what we're doing.
When they were talking renewals and buyouts, they kept giving us prices below what we were getting. I'm like, why would we do this? We're not going to do that. That's why we added that language in the RFP, saying this is what we expect to get.
Yeah, I was just, um, on the map, I, I. I couldn't figure out the map at all, like, the. What are the shaded? Are they rights of way? I don't, are they walkways? I can't figure out what the lease areas are exactly from us.
See if I have a map. Print here, but just to look at it.
Because it's really just that, I mean, they don't have any rights of way or anything. They're just next to the tower. They have a plot of land. They put their stuff on it.
Yeah, everyone seems to gather on a fine fence.
Yeah.
That's what was so confusing to us was that there's only one fence, there's only one connect, but there's three ground leases within it.
Yeah, so it's, so. So I'm understanding, same people that currently have leases, same site, same equipment, I'm sure they upgraded, but generally speaking, same equipment. And this is just extending it for, as the.
Five years of time.
Five years of time, yeah.
Three percent. Changes.
In two different ways.
Yes.
Right.
We prefer the main.
Let's see.
Yeah, I started, look at this map and I don't even know.
The map doesn't. I don't even know.
I know. It's easy to look out the window and see.
Yeah, just, I mean, I think.
I know, yeah.
Right away, like, my understanding, looking at it, maybe I'm wrong, is there access to fix it or to get to it.
And those, those great pathways, I believe those are actually the overhead wire conduits. Those aren't pathways.
They have air rights too.
That's how they get the conduits. When you pick you up, look, it's like tracks that go over.
I'm kidding.
So they can repair it.
So they went to the generator, they went to the tower, but those aren't pathways, those are the overhead conduits.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
I mean, I'll tell you where my head is, but I mean. Do you feel, I mean, I, I. I think we should move forward. I think it's the best deal we're gonna get. I think Jim is right. Other towns are producing these. People are saying, see you later. Um, let's get anywhere that you're in here, if we can, block them out, right?
Yeah, I agree. I agree. I mean, ending the, I mean, our, our council should look at the.
This, other.
That's part of the process, right?
Yeah, it won't come back to you for signature.
Yeah, well, yeah.
No. And for any reason they changed their foot script, which I'm sorry, no. Okay, camera, sorry.
And the rental, I mean, the renewals are mutual? Like, I'm, I'm more concerned that.
So you mean they can't fail?
Can they fail?
Oh, can they fail?
Yeah.
They're automatic. Uh, I think they're the ones who have to stop it. I think they'll put up like, now it's, it's hard to remember.
Sure. But unless Ted provides, well, they could, yeah, they could just fail it with ninety days notice.
And they got their equipment out of there.
Yeah, but, okay. Yeah.
The ninety's priority expression with the initial term or any renewal term?
Yeah, so to me, the left, the, the direction is that, yeah, to have, have similar like, yeah. Align language makes sense. Council approve it, bless it. Um. Make sure that the terms are what they meant and. We'll hold them to it because they put it in the bed.
If for some reason they, um, they start to say, you know, I want more land, then, okay, then let's chat about that, but right now.
Would we have to put it out again?
No, it was in their original RFP.
Oh, okay.
Uh, but they were the ones backing away, saying, no.
Okay.
I like the option.
Okay. So no motion tonight, then?
Um, you can take a motion contingent on town council approving it and be brought to the.
No, it's what I think it is.
Okay.
I just.
Yeah, I think it's actually written in my. Little did I know.
Yes.
It is written in the way.
Move to award a ground lease to new singular wireless, E S B L L C for a five year period. The three five year renewals for six hundred square feet located behind Town Hall. For total rent of six hundred and seventy five thousand one hundred twenty four dollars and sixty one cents over a twenty year term. Effective January first, twenty twenty four, contention on town council's approval, amended lease form.
Second.
She's, yeah, she'll say about this. Harrison, all those in favor say aye.
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 And move to award a ground lease to T-Mobile Northeast LLC for a five year period. The three five year renewals for eight hundred fifty square feet located behind Town Hall. The total rent of five hundred two thousand and thirty five dollars and twenty four cents over twenty year term. Effective January first, twenty twenty four, contention on town council's approval of amended lease form.
I just can't filter every second.
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, this is unanimous.
Very much.
Alright. Moving on. Fiscal year twenty twenty five. Local budget review.
Who gives the picture out of that? I, I, I go desperate. Nobody answered my, my, my request for pictures. So you've got a picture of dots.
Empty dots.
There's only so many times you can use the warehouse.
It'll be nice and shiny when it goes back up.
Well.
Um. Good evening. Seems, this seems weird. We're talking about twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five and. All those fiscal years, but we're gonna move up our process. So here you are with the F Y twenty five operating budget. What these. Previously, we'll go through it rather quickly. The board is aware of most of how the budget works, but, um. We'll start off with the F Y twenty three recap. One of the highest free cash we've had in quite some time. Given by one point four million dollars of turnbacks from our apartments, better than, uh, poor cash revenue collections. One million dollars in investment income and three hundred thousand dollars in sale of four closely invested, we could run that. Uh, general fund, we seek to up. Given by the major developments that are wrapping up. It's a lot of the building permits, lots of the permits and things like that. We continue our investment in our roads and bridges. We maintain our triple A bond rating. Double A plus, sorry. Uh, we did have a radius call out last week. We made, I thought was a very good pitch to get upgraded bond rate. Kind of not committal, but. Looking at some of our competing towns, towns that have triple A, I think they made a good case, so we'll see. Two years ago, three years ago, not a big difference between double A plus and triple A with the low interest rate, low interest rates. Getting higher, that gap widens and it'll make a big difference. If and when we get the school of art for the water treatment, so. Nancy, you can do a fantastic job of putting the numbers together. I tried to beat him up, but I couldn't go to spin it. Maybe that's why we're here, so we will see. F Y twenty four, that's our current fiscal year for people who get confused by all this. Uh, it ends June thirtieth of twenty twenty four. New growth was higher at the end of those projects and the projects I'm talking about. Uh, the Toll Brothers project on Hathaway, Stockbridge Road forty B. The Drew project, uh, the train station, sanctuary at Situate. Forty B on three, and those projects all wrapped up this past year. So those both numbers will be going the way. Uh, right now, our local seats are on track. Our spending is on track. Continue to get grants. Uh, we get a four hundred seventy three thousand dollar loan forgiveness. For money from the water pollution abatement, Mass Clean Water Trust, that's a water treatment plant. We were not expecting that. That was a surprise to us. Great. So we're hoping that bodes well for the rest of the project as we go forward, because we only borrowed a very small amount of money this. This time, on the average, nine hundred twenty one thousand dollar home, that's fifty seven dollars saved on someone's taxes. So thank you to the state for that. Great work by Nancy, by Water Park Staff. We get that. As we move into fiscal twenty five, which will end June thirtieth of twenty twenty five and starts next July. Property taxes will increase by two and a half percent. New growth is projected at three hundred thousand dollars. As we said, the new growth is cooling. There's those major projects. State A right now is level funded at F Y twenty four levels. In December, the state meets and they come up with what's called the consensus revenue forecast. The next fiscal year, which will give them a number of what they think the state budget can increase for the next fiscal year. Then generally from that, the governor comes up with her budget. That's usually released in January and mid-January, at least under Charlie Baker. They would release the local aid numbers during the MMA conference. So we should have those numbers. Mid-July, mid-January, and then we'll put an extra forecast and we. Usually since I've been here, we use the governor's number. Going forward, the twenty year, I've been doing this only twice. Has the governor's number not been the lowest number put forth by the state, so, uh, we should be comfortable about that. Local receipts level funded, we did increase on fresh Y twenty four. The meals tax remains at two hundred thirty thousand. Meals taxes have been pretty good. Uh, but we are concerned that there may be some development. Projections for a possible where, uh. River Shedd is, thank you. Maybe housing complaining about, I said some rumblers about that, that that may be developed into housing, so, uh, we're staying pretty conservative on that. Financial forecast has met twice so far. Right now, we will wait, uh, unless we get something else, we'll wait till the governor's numbers come out to adjust our financial forecast. Just a graph on where the revenue comes from. As you can see, the lion's share. Eighty one percent of our revenue is made up of the local property tax levy. When you break that down, ninety six percent of the property tax levy comes from residential taxes. So we have a very small commercial industrial base that all comes out of the pockets of the local homeowners. Single last, single year average tax bills based on home value of nine hundred twenty one thousand. Local receipts. You can see they spiked twenty twenty three. We do expect it to continue coming down, and a lot of that will be driven by the lack of permits fees coming in on those large developments. F Y twenty five operating budget. There is no free cash. There are no non-recurring revenues used to balance the budget. New growth projections, as I said, have declined due development, which hasn't been completed. The good news is there are some. Projects that are larger in scope than what we normally see, not quite as large as. Old Brothers, larger projects, the seven new dripway of the medical center has been permitted. The Tedeschi property with the animal, animal hospital. Dog, dog. Something positive. It's close to being permitted. The forty B and old open bucket has been permitted. I do not believe that's been appealed, so we do have some larger projects that have been permitted. They have not started. I don't know if that interest rate issue or what. We will see a dip in new growth for at least a year or two of those projects really getting going. State A level funded, uh, we have four union contracts that will expire at the end of this year. AMP and Tosca, those are our political union and our managers' union. A dispatch union, which is a smaller union. Fire union, those contracts all expire. We have, we saw the fire department. Also, you know, our union employees will have a, they're gonna pay raise. It's actually voted by this board every year. So that, so that has to include it too.
How long is the fire contract, typically?
Three years.
It's like constant.
You know, because, uh, we have contracts that are off, so sometimes we do all the contracts in a single year, which I think kills the manager or the H R staff. Uh, so we have them cut off, so it seems like they're always moving a contract, because it's almost always one that's just off. Offside, so, um. We'll get done. It's gonna take a while. We'll get done with. The last two contracts done, I think you did the work good, so. I think we'll get it done. It won't be easy. Have a high body, they have so many, but. We've got a lot of work with them, so I, we'll get a contract done. Question about that. Uh, we have multiple requests for new positions, multiple requests for additional hours, touch upgrades. Given the financial situation that you will see as we go through it, none of those have had funding for this coming, upcoming fiscal year. There are no new positions, there are no increases in hours. Uh, and we had a request for the increase in the inspector rates. And that is also not been included in this budget. We also put the road for sure on the budget on hold for this fiscal year, and I'll get to that as we go. Our expenses, everybody else at home, our expenses are rising faster than anything else. We are still experiencing supply chain issues, inflation, workforce shortages, and economic global uncertainty. We are, actually, for the first time in my history, we sometimes get ghosted on interviews. We set up interviews with people and they just don't show up. Never seen that before. It's. Better depressing, but it's not just us. It's every other town, every other business. People just don't even give you the courtesy to show up, so. We have had a lot of turnover, um, some of our grounds, people are going to a lot of utilities. We have been filling those positions as quickly as we can. Fix costs are some of our big drivers this year. Health, life insurance, FICA, pension assessments on unemployment, uh, we have to plug the body agreements. And we have to make sure we're giving competitive service demands for personnel, limited pieces and available recurring revenue, so we are seeing that. As a lease contract, we were nine out of ten for our benchmark towns. Starting to lose police officers because of our pay scale. That contract was pricey, but it's necessary if we want to retain and track quality employees in the town situation. Financial forecast, the amount available for the town was twenty three million five hundred sixty two thousand eight hundred eighty six. Apartment request was twenty five million four hundred forty two thousand zero fifty two. To quote Sesame Street, one of these things is not like the other. They have to be the same when I come to you with the budget. That included thirteen new positions, fourteen hours a week of additional part-time assistance, and increasing the expected rates that were requested. So our expenses exceeded our revenues by one point eight seven nine million dollars. When we moved all the new personnel and rate changes. That closed the gap by a million one ninety five and still left six hundred eighty three thousand and change. That had to be found to balance this budget. Uh, reduction of road to seawalls from four hundred to zero. We lowered that a couple of years ago and we put it back at sixteen years. Right now, it's out of three cruisers. I'm recommending a single cruiser. That would be the first place I would go back if we could additional state and go with those cruisers back. And then go through the other requests, uh, basically picking out. Not quite all, but mostly the request for increases in general budget funds. Uh, this slide really kind of shows you where the rubber is hitting the road in terms of price and cost. Employee pensions, seven hundred twenty nine thousand dollars a month. Health insurance, ten percent increase, three hundred eighty two thousand. And then way down the bottom, regional school assessment is up two hundred seventy six thousand. That's the social botec. We continue to refine those. Uh, the health insurance, we'll also have a better idea of the health insurance at the MMAs. They usually come out with the range of rates at that times. Fortunately, don't think that's gonna come down much at all. First of all, the market health insurance is outstandingly. Second of all, our experience, March, the last two years. First of all, in the market, health insurance is outstandingly, second of all, our experience, March, the last two years have not been very good. Which means that we've been using our insurance a lot, so that's driving our costs at the same time. This slide just kind of gives you the idea of what those fixed costs mean. Fixed costs about one million, five hundred thirty eight thousand, get health insurance, ten percent. You know, pensions, social vote tech assessment. Eighty one percent of your recurring revenue to split the operating budgets, property taxes. Two and a half, one hundred, one point eight million. New growth, eight hundred thousand, that's two point six million. Fifty eight percent of that is taken out by fixed costs, four minutes. I explained that, right? Had a practice, I was getting tripped over on the time. We've had, that, no, that's just, it's amazing, sixty percent before you even get started.
We didn't stop.
Sixty percent, it's deep down. Sorry.
Now, there is, I mean, there was a line at the end, there was a line at the end of the tunnel with pensions that we will eventually get to fully fund on the pensions in FY twenty nine. Uh, but, uh, we will probably be recommending at that point that the vast majority of that savings are all of it, and get switched to zero, that one. But that, that does actually basically come to an end, uh, fiscal twenty nine.
Personal costs increasing, as we know, again, uh, we saw with the police department that we weren't paying market. I know we're going to say the same thing for fire department, we saw it on DPW. Especially the DPW, it wasn't so much what we were paying for wages. It was those employees with the higher level licenses, sort of two plant operator, water treatment plant operator, and even now getting a spot out to class, the class two license, and those are the type of man we're having a hard time uh, finding them, so we're having a good incentive people that have those to save. And it's getting more expensive. Utility costs really haven't come down that much. Equipment, parts and supplies are still very expensive. We met with Mass Highway the other day, so I think we're forgetting. I know Mara will fill you in when she's back, but, uh, they were talking about they would pick up to a year, not just to be processed any, or they want to put it in a traffic light. Um, because of the supply chain issues. Uh, and there's a lot of stuff that you'll see when the individual departments come in, show you their budget request, that we're just not meeting the needs. We still have the funds for personnel and bodies. We managed to get through the last several years because of those high growth numbers. Growth for one year, ask you based on the following year, also helps with our stabilization fund. Based on the adopted revenue sharing formula, town departments here, net revenues is eight hundred twelve thousand dollars more than FY twenty five. Compared to FY twenty four, a million eighty six. One of the big things that I, I strive to do, or I think we did, is we maintain our account. There is no one walking out the door on this budget, so that's a good thing, but you will see some of the expense budgets are not not very robust. Now, the good part about that is, you saw we turned back one point four million dollars. The departments here are excellent, making sure that it needs to be spent before they spend it. So they are turning money back, some of that is also going to be personnel that we just haven't filled. So that's good. Also, we've never had the, I know in some towns, if you don't spend your whole budget, they don't, we do so for next year. It's just me, the department spends all their money, whether they need to or not, and they have their four hundred bucks gloves in the back or somewhere. Uh, we've never done that to our department, so they are very frugal with their money, and only trying to spend what they need to spend. Here's the list of your personnel requests. Six new police officers, of which we have discussed numerous times, based upon the impact of post and police reform. We no longer have the permanent, they make part-time officers that have worked for us in the past. Uh, library has asked for two new positions, a marketing outreach coordinator, I believe they asked for that before, we brought Kathy on board. Uh, but also a head of new services library, which they've been asking for, hoping for, for a number of years. Uh, new people to council agent, again, assistant council agent director. If you build it, they will come, they have come, they do come. Council agent is tremendously busy, it's nowhere near where it was when Linda was running the place two, three years ago. I think her request for additional staff. They're all warranted, but just given the amount of business up there, that's a, a big one. Now, I get a media activities assistant, that was also requested before, we brought Kathy on board. Two new skilled positions in the Department of Public Works, Public Grounds, to keep up with all the fields, maintenance that we have to do. New staff engineer, the DPW. We save the town a significant amount of monies on large projects by staffing them with our own engineers. Actually significantly cheaper than trying to pay the consultant or your engineering firm to do it, but with the number of projects that we have. We have one engineer that is completely dedicated all day, every day to the three A projects, so. Uh, added that, all the seawalls, all the bids, everything else. Uh, Tom Clark asked for five hours a week, and our office select board asked for additional hours for our part-time position to keep up with stuff filling that office. Uh, especially the, the request for buildings, use of buildings. You know, Jen does a fantastic job, but as everybody else says, it's just something that's not enough, boss, today. Uh, and then the building department asked for an increase in inspector rates from thirty two to forty dollars an hour. That has not been factored in at this point, obviously, to discuss that a little bit more. Factored for, I mean, yes, the issue part of that is though, we raise our fees. That goes into the hopper, and then a portion of that goes to schools, a portion of it goes to us, so all the money that we raised in the fees doesn't come back to cover the costs that we have, so, um. Maybe something we need to talk about, financial forecast that is supposed to be in the door, not the door, but it doesn't work, that would destroy, it's one of the quirks of our financial forecast. Which I, I think is an excellent process, but that's just a quirk that I have bugs. Additional challenges, obviously, the ocean is a challenge, uh, we've had a couple of good years. Everybody, myself included, seems to think that that is over, that this is going to be a difficult winter. They already have, they think additional snow. I don't even want to begin to tell you the amount of time that Nancy and Sean McCathy spent on the phone with FEMA. I can tell you one phone call with FEMA, he was talking about seawall, I had lunch, picked up my haircut, I came back, the same guy was still talking about the same thing while I was gone. Uh, they're just mind numbing, time sucks. We have Third Cliff, we have four different name storms. And we're trying to get done and fixed up by dealing with CZF, and dealing with everything else. Elevation grants, the curry, which are fantastic, but take a lot of work, EPW cleanups, conservation. A lot of things that a lot of towns don't deal with, it takes up a lot of our staff time. We've done very well on grants, and you do very well on grants. I have said in the past that I'm concerned about some of the for sure money. Because since two thousand eighteen, Quincy and Boston, all of a sudden, they're like, say, they're vulnerable to flooding too. Uh, they are now participating in those branch programs, it's not that funny. Uh, but we get, I think, more than our lion's share of grants, we do a fantastic job on those. Seawall grants, for sure grants, we continue to do those, uh, but a lot of those grants require a match, and for us, a lot of times, the match is time personnel. I'll stop there real quick, that's the general fund budget. I don't want to be all doom and gloom. Hope it's not a strategy. We do anticipate we will get additional state aid that will help some of these numbers. It is possible that the health insurance number could come down, not going to come down substantially, it's not going to come down five points, maybe a point, maybe two, if we're lucky. I don't really have a sense of the number. Uh, I've spoken to superintendent, I kind of know he is a staff, uh, spending a lot of time going through those vote tech numbers to make sure that we're not creating cessers to students that might not situate. Uh, maybe they live in Hummer Rock or Marshfield, and they're using a different address, or wherever. He and his staff are going through those numbers, make sure that we're not giving cessers to students. Situate, but, uh, it's a great program, it's a good thing, students that go, they get a lot out of it, so. If that's what it is, that's what it is, but we don't want to be paying students that way. So I'll stop there on the general fund at this point. Obviously, everybody needs to, okay, now. She went on that. Doing the vote tech.
Yeah.
I might be in the head order here, I just find that a bit just tasteful. Public school, good looks, Hummer Rock. There's other areas to be concerned about, but a child trying to go to.
No, no, no.
Vote tech, I mean, I, I get it.
And the, the, the best thing about that is, Marshfield is in the district now. Right, so Marshfield wasn't in the district before, so they wouldn't be able to get in, uh. The other, I talked to the admissions people the other day, Noble has twenty slots. Uh, they generally get between ten and twelve applicants for those slots. I think you said Rockford gets twenty slots, they had ninety six applicants for those slots last year, so, um. I think you probably had some border things there with maybe Marshfield and some other towns, but we just want to make sure they're asked, that's all. Especially with Marshfield being in the district now after theirs, with them, they'll pick up the jobs, because it's very difficult to get out of the district schools.
All right, hold it up.
I'll put one more category under the vote tech numbers, we don't include the January twenty five. January twenty five, Kathy brought up district wide vote, uh, on a new vote tech. And the way that works is, you vote for the new vote tech, or not for the new vote tech, there's nothing to do with funding. It just gets added to our assessment later on, I think I feel, whatever money. That'll be twenty fiscal twenty seven, probably by the time you start seeing them.
Yeah, at least twenty.
Passes to twenty six, you can see it, twenty seven, twenty eight. So again, I'll stop at the general fund, and then we can do really quick through the enterprise accounts.
Questions, turns, thoughts?
No, I'm concerned that like all the personnel were posted, couldn't see any of that. So that's the second.
Excuse me, I see when we haven't added a lot of people, the five years I've been there, IT, I added a person. Facilities, we added.
On line of vote tech.
Yep. And then our media coordinator, so it's not like we've been going out adding people, it was good times for here.
Yeah. Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Uh, I'm going to go reverse where only we just talked about my tech. I don't know how I regional school assessment that doesn't come out of the school budget?
Cherry sheet. Cherry sheet attachment, so it's one of the above the line fixed costs.
Okay, I knew that, forgot it, okay. Um, so about, I think, while you're wringing your hands over the whole, you know, we know we have needs on the staff, you know, we don't have the funds for it, so what? So if we're not adding the people that we know that we need, how are we going to think about potential reduction of services? Because it's, you, you can't provide, if you, if you know you need these people, to do to tread water and improve services. It just stands to reason that without them, we're going to have to look at, well, how do you not burn out the staff you have? You know, I, I know with the library, it's like, okay, do we need to think about cutting hours so that we can provide good service with the people we have? Do we cut programs, and I don't, I'm not advocating for this, but do we cut programs with the council agent, because we just can't do it all? And where's that balance between providing the service that we know is asked and they just go through it? Without losing all target people?
Well, you have any two different questions, right?
Yeah.
A lot of my criticism of some departments is always that they add services, then they come back later and say, look how busy we are, we don't have the staff. Do the bad services that they could staff to be. It really becomes a value question. I mean, DPW, it's about prioritizing, it's about making sure you get it done, the stuff that has to get done. And then some stuff just, just won't get done, and we've had that conversation with my office, and I said, it's something we get. So it's too far down our list, and it's not something we're going to get, it's pretty nice, but which.
I guess my question is, like, are we really instructing our departments to to do the exercise, what, what is our core product in each of the departments? Making sure that's done exceptionally well, and then everything else is, when you can get to it, when you can afford it.
Yeah, I mean, I think we do do that now. We take care of our core responsibilities very well. We have an exceptional staff there in all the departments.
We're a victim of our own success, a lot of it's, yeah.
But again, you can't, well, we'd always like to do this, but we just can't.
So the answer to a question of that, and I'm just amused more than anything, the answer to a question on that is you know, it is more and more competitive to keep fabulous people, like people in this room, in, um, in this work. And you're addressing with contract negotiations. Is that sort of the financial decision we have to make, it's like, I'd rather give our people competitive wage to not lose them, because retention is valuable to us versus adding bodies, you know, you know, I.
I guess it really depends upon what you're talking about. When you're talking about your public safety, you need to retain those people. You need to retain the trained people you have. Because, one, they're outstanding in what they do. Two, they're getting hotter and hotter to these points. Police officers, like, I love to sell that global on the TV stations. Counter domestic police academy has the highest drop off rate ever. Forty eight percent classes, about that, couldn't say, you know? Yeah, so I don't want to be a police officer. So we're seeing fewer and fewer people going in to law enforcement, so we need to retain those people that we have, not just because they're outstanding, but because we can, they're sort of setting in the fire department, uh, we are looking for paramedics. Everybody is looking for paramedics, so you not only need to be able to attract those new people to commit, but you need to keep the people you have. Uh, and they're a great demand, and they're being poached.
Yeah. We're down four in the W, right?
We're, we're down four now, I think we may be higher than two yesterday.
Um, one in particular that I do want to just spend a little time on is the not increasing the inspector's rates. Uh, I, somewhere in the back of my mind, I remember we had that conversation of one of the big problems is not having enough bodies to make sure the people that have permits are going, you know, doing that inspection.
So this, this is not those inspectors?
Oh.
These are the, your, I call them local inspectors, wiring, gas, plumbing.
Yeah.
Uh, and they can pay it on a per inspection basis.
Yeah.
So that's talking about raising their inspection rates to pay them more per inspection.
I thought it was the other. And the one thing that I haven't seen that we normally, that I've seen in the past, is the, our average tax rate compared to neighboring towns, it's in your book, it's in the book, it's in the news, it's starting to be a love in towns.
It's not tax rate?
I did doubt even.
Not tax rates, average tax bill.
Average tax.
The tax rates, it's just that, it's just a mathematical number, that's what you're actually paying.
Thank you, that will be, you know, we see our line going like this, I like to.
Yeah, Hammonds is not going to go like that, because they just passed, there's overrides, it is going to make a job. I think there's a lot of towns, when there was a threat going around for the managers group, there's a lot of towns who are contemplating overrides, if not, this shouldn't be for the next year. It's just, you know, it's just a psychic, get to that point, last override situation was two thousand and twelve.
Which, would, you know, comes to the service and, and are you willing to take this for this, that, there's so much early to expect in persons in the next three years, that's. Okay. Kathy's kind of working on it, making sure that people are aware of all the good things we're doing. That was my list.
Uh, just further on, on the inspection rate. Maybe it was, it's in the book, but eight dollar increase, I mean, how many inspections are we talking about?
Several thousand.
It's a lot.
It's about forty four thousand dollars.
It's forty four thousand, no.
Well, and it's per inspection, because they come out like when it's dropped in and then when it's, so you could have work done.
Rock, you get a final, you get a I got a policy, you must take, look at it.
Yeah.
They come out in the final, and it's not priced, they come back.
And the increases with the fear of, we're not getting. Just can't get the folks out there, or?
No, again, it's just becoming more and more competitive, the state is making the requirements to be inspector hotter. So everybody's starting to look for them. You know, why am I gonna be inspector in situ if I didn't do the same thing in Marshville for fifteen dollars more inspection, I'll go to Noble or. We have great inspectors, right, it's one of the things I would like to put out, but it's only a year and a box, it's forty-four thousand dollars.
Well, we could do it with black people, honestly, if there was a way to pay for it. Uh, my other question, so I know that we have amazing staff, is there anything we could do to make their jobs easier? And I wonder about, like, sometimes on the hours a week, and I know. Lorraine's like, you implemented the, like, online, some of the more automated systems. I know one example was Jen and, Jennifer and all the, um, you know, events.
Special events.
And maybe we're taking the check and giving the check back, so I don't, does any ideas? I know if we can't, like, have more, we can't offer more hours, maybe there's a way that we can offer. Like alleviate some of the, like, pain points. I don't know that, I mean, I'm just.
I mean, I would defer to Lorraine whether that's gonna alleviate the pain points, but I can tell you getting to that point was a tremendous amount of pain.
Okay.
Tremendous amount of pain.
Get all that stuff loaded up, it took a tremendous amount of hours between her, also Lorraine, Michelle, and Jen also.
Yeah.
Took a whole lot of work, and you still have to, I don't know if we reduce the work, it reduces the amount of paper maybe?
I mean, I see your tax worker has been a lifesaver for us.
Yeah.
So utilizing senior taxpayers is a huge benefit, but it takes a lot of your time to train them.
Yeah.
I love it.
Then they get all trained, ready to go, they run out of hours basically.
I sign them up for the next year.
But to, to, to Karen Campbell's point, you know, sometimes I'll just say, you know, we're gonna be open, we're gonna be, we're gonna staff on a Friday, but we're not gonna open to the public, so people can get caught up on their work.
Yeah.
And you might have to consider, it's, uh, the, the stream of people in and out of this building is, is constant.
Yeah.
It's constant.
I know. Well, I would.
Do a catch-up week.
I would wanna make sure we communicate that, whether it's hours change, but then also like if we're gonna slow off stuff, or if stuff's at the bottom of the list. You know, it needs to be communicated that this is at the bottom of the list. So we can only do certain things.
I mean, a, a great example, as soon as you know, was the shellfish. I told the board, I, it's something I don't have the time to do, so we had a formal committee to do it, because I just said, it's not something I can add to my plate. What can I look at? You add to my plate, just sell it. Jack it by.
So many thoughtful discussions about that topic.
I mean, um, with the fixed costs, I mean, I know, we've talked about this before, I mean, is there any? Is there any hope, any appetite, I'm gonna throw it out there, especially on the insurance, the, the general property insurance, anything? If there's another advisor we could look to, to see if bundle it or thing, and I, I mean, I know we do everything we probably can, but is there a thought?
We've taken a bunch of things out of Maya. Uh, gone to separate, doxin, peers is none, and cyber's none, what else has been pulled up?
Anything that we found that isn't competitive, we've shopped around?
We've shopped around, um, we've also went Maya the riot act two or three times, saying, you guys just have to do better, you just can't, we're coming, so I don't have twenty-six percent this year. Do better, we can hire a consultant to come and look at our insurance, bet out the different parts of it. May, may not save us money, but then it becomes more difficult for the staff, they have a policy over there, and a policy over there, a policy over there, we've covered one.
We actually did it, when they came back, it was, there wasn't a real savings. So now the company that got the, the main quote from, the one that was. They're the ones that have been shopping stuff out too, to see if they can do better, so like the flood insurance, that's been shopped out, and we've gotten a little bit better. There's a ten percent in the, in the forecast, but once we get to January, we'll have a better idea of when it's really gonna go. Whether that'd be a ten percent on that side of insurance, or is it gonna be a little bit better? It also depends on our claim insurance, our claims history, and we have our original meeting this week.
That one year we had a really bad fit, yeah. Cruises and trucks, we spent a lot of time with the deductibles and all that stuff.
We changed all, we changed our deductible, we took this last year.
Oh, yeah.
If you wanna ask us, we'd like to sub it, it's one of the parties at all.
Yeah.
So I'll ask the third rail question. Bad poll, it's bad budget policy. But for things like sidewalks or roads, and the free cash, using free cash. For certain items of the budget, I know that's terrible policy, I'm just, I'm thinking if, if we're thought, if we're talking about.
He wouldn't view bad years. He wouldn't do it in the budget, if he wanted the roads and seawalls, he wanted to try to maintain those, you do capital, not in your operating budget. Uh, so we're reducing that on the budget, you could try to increase it to capital for that year, or it doesn't become a. Uh, once you stop putting one-time revenues in your operating budget, that becomes your hole that you need to fill before you do anything else. You go back, um, just bad, bad, bad.
That's right, no, I did that, I was, I was trying to, trying to fix it, trying to fix it.
Yeah, but again, if.
Trying to fix it.
Bro, whatever. That one thing that I pulled out of the budget, you could, you have the free cash, you could say, I'm gonna increase that.
To do that.
Capital budget over here to make up for it, it's not unbalancing your operating budget.
Should we consider that for sidewalks and?
But, well, that's, it has the same, same pressures every year in the capital, right, all my, my free cash now is going down. It's all because of the other things. Done a lot of road work, a lot of road work, done a lot of water, a lot of water projects, water on itself. How to keep up, trying to get the state to put more chat to ninety, and they've raised chat to ninety since, I don't know, since I started this. Price of asphalt has gone to their.
Enterprise funds, we've got a few good ones.
Enterprise funds, we've got a few good ones, yay. Waters Walks, Waters Walks in good shape. This will be a big year for Waters Walk, because, as you know, this year's budget, coming this budget, we are bringing the Jenkins back in-house. That was one of Ian's big goals, and we agree with that, so he's gonna bring that back in-house. From the company that's been doing it, so this will be a big year for Ian and for that group to make sure that they can do what needs to be done. The golf courses going with great guns despite Valdino, which heard the radio was Spanish for rain every weekend this past summer. So it was a tough weather-wise summer, that they get rained on the weekends, but still, uh, it's killing it down there. People love going to play golf there. Clubhouse, the bar, and the, the outdoor, little tee-in lines there, I think is driving the crowds, there's a lot of people. It's great value, the course is in great shape, when you go, we talked about it when we did the clubhouse. Then when we go play golf, wanna have something, they wanna have a drink afterwards, they can do that now, so.
What's our percentage share on the, on the, whatever it's called?
We get three percent over the first hundred thousand.
But we get a.
Have, have we hit it yet?
I think, I think we've been getting three percent, waiting to get three percent for the quarter ended, uh, September thirtieth. I was looking about that last week, and our rent went up this year from three thousand a month to base rent to three thousand one hundred and fifty.
So did we hit it on the second quarter, or what? You said, when did we hit the hundred?
Oh, no, it's, the first hundred thousand, there's not a three percent on, uh, in the quarter.
Oh, in the quarter, okay.
And we cut in funds every quarter they then operate.
Gotcha, okay.
Where, where does that go?
Where's the water?
Just go to the.
I mean, my only complaint about the golf course is the outdoor bars have a foot rail when we sit there. He's gonna head there, but, um, really, because he's doing a, his staff, it's one of the happiest places you got, and it hasn't been good, and he's glad to be there. That's all, the golf is coming up, eighteen, they've got the bad move. Waters Walk is, is in good shape, and the weather holds up, and he has the staff, I don't see anything changing down there, really not.
He's in two weeks, of course, with the ten thirty.
Yep. Uh, next one is Waterways, uh, Waterways also in good shape at this point. We had two hundred and fifty-three, we stayed earnings, revenues are tracking, expenses are tracking. We'll be all looking to make our number for Waterways Enterprise next year. I know there's ongoing conversations in the Waterways Committee about what they charge. That they have a very large dredge program coming up, which would be charging up to half of this three million dollars in authorization. The capital budget for that, we're looking to dig, see, for the, Seaport Economic Council will pick up possibly a big portion of that. And then they will be doing a feasibility study on their building. Bathrooms, if you've been in there, are not very hit, kept accessible, they're old. The issue with that would be when you touch those bathrooms, are you then hitting fifty percent of the value of the building, which means you now have to be blood codes. Means the building might have to go up, which means we're talking about the building, so, uh, that's something else they have to look at in the future, what's gonna happen with that go.
Is Cole Parkway having a competition anyway, the redevelopment committee?
Well, Cole, so Cole Parkway's doing resiliency, and to let the flooding down, and to stop the flooding, and to fix the drainage, and to do all that stuff. Uh, but even if there was no flooding, it's still within the velocity zone, it would still have to be, I mean, the good thing for them is that it'll, that'll rise. So it's not gonna have to go up fifteen feet, but it might have to go up thirty, forty feet. All the management's like that, so that's just something that they can keep an eye on, if it gets too far down the road, it's not thinking, well, they don't fund us.
Does this revenue, uh, include additional warrants that should be coming in?
No, definitely not with any additional warrants.
We, we, we dredge?
No.
Oh, no. We've, we've discussed that, I don't think those warrants would be worth our time or effort to go all in, at least. But that's a conversation you can have when the time comes. I would say take them out.
All right.
Uh, next up, Water Enterprise. Haven't said this in a long time.
Yeah.
Water Enterprise is actually in good shape right now, we did have a large turnback in the campaign during last year. We had debt service over the last year, so we raised that money, and it turned back. Revenues are on par with last year, expenses within budget, we do have a revenue estimate of eight million dollars for next year. Their expenses were at seven million six. So we're gonna increase that, and we're gonna pay down their debt, they do have a lot of debt. They requested one new position, but we don't believe they need it at this point, because we structured that department, and they still haven't made a position, if you so.
All right. Questions?
No.
So those are the good enterprise accounts.
Yes.
Transport station, I almost spent a lot of time in that, you just spent time with the S C N. That's Sean on that. And soar Enterprise. Soar Enterprise really continues to struggle. Their expenses, that chemical skate going up. So for the budget that you see, it will need a three to four percent rate increase just to maintain water requirement.
When we're reviewing the rates, June, and, um, you were also probably January range, we'll be reviewing the impact of the tier structure on the water rates. To see what it did to consumption, because unfortunately, the water we make program, water conservation, and the, the tier. And the change helped move usage, negatively impacts revenue, and negatively impacts the sewer enterprise revenue, which is based on water usage.
There's the rub.
And both transport stations, sewer enterprise one had their reserves cut as well, so the market's a reserve that we just added, but it's took that out.
Oh, they do have a reduction in sewer, you know, such a.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, the big, that's the big project that we have, it's in the capital, it's part of the design, so. I believe we applied for Mass Works grant, but that we were not successful, and that's why we, because Mass Works wants to fund actual projects as opposed to design. So we'll go back and look at that again, or related to stuff building that, it is, as we've talked about, it's part of the mutual, so we check every box that they have for grant money from the construction, so. Uh, that's on to be, aside to design, so. That'll be the big one, and then maintaining our water, maintaining the soar, maintain our.
All right. Capital, you know.
And one new thing we did this year in the capital plan, there was a request that you had to identify, uh, which master plan calls your capital request. Once to that, so try to do the goals of the master plan forward. That is where we are, uh, slightly slower, but.
Great. Yeah.
There's a lot of work to do.
Uh, no more.
Nancy's, has put the other some numbers that the board wants to say, well, fiscal impacts, we want to get things back for a little.
So you, you said, you know, state aid, we get pleasantly surprised, police cruisers are your first step, add in?
Eight police cruisers, maybe the first place I go back.
This first.
Not over.
One.
One, two, and I don't really see us getting a lot more funding beyond that. State aid back up to a couple hundred thousand.
We're gonna get thirty.
You didn't know, we only got thirty.
Right.
I'm not, I'm not expecting any huge windfalls, but we had ten, so our health insurance, it's only four, a couple hundred, a couple of balls, state aid suddenly was like a good. I'll say, David, happy surprise.
Awesome, that, we're gonna start with, with, I know it's in the.
We'll just start the budget here.
Good.
So right now.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I didn't know that.
You'll have the partners at every week, I think we've got a good schedule, right, right? All the budgets are all scheduled?
Yes, they are.
Yeah.
I know we have a good budget for our. Council agent on a couple.
All right, so there's a, there's a lot. I mean, we wanna hear from our, you know, the other members of the board, but, you know, I mean, I think it's important that we start getting all numbers out, for those to see, for the whole to see, that, oh. Just enough to see what the things are. Yeah, I mean, the, the remaining deficit, you know, six hundred and eighty-three thousand, that's a real number. Um, and then one point one million for the personnel. You know, those are.
I mean, what you, what you say, we have a twenty-three million dollar budget, we need to come up with seven hundred thousand, doesn't seem like. It's a lot of money, but the majority of our budgets, the vast majority of our budgets. Something you really start to start, I don't want to touch the people, because they're the ones who actually do all that, who have the service.
Right, you're at five twenty, or you only have to get seven hundred thousand? What, twenty million?
Nancy and I would have run the budget several times, driving things, she, other, I would do something, she would come back, so it took us a lot of time to really come to a consensus, so. Both of us, okay, this is not a good place, but at least we agree what we want to be.
That's like the definition of compromise.
I try not to argue with Nancy too much, I generally lose, and don't argue with the people who make your food and issue your check as well, like. Access is a lot of.
All right, yeah, so to, to beat that, with the, the current, just so folks know. Alright, yeah, so to, to beat that, with the, the current, just so folks know, with the current. School to town ratio. We have to find twenty million revenue. Yeah, six hundred sixty thousand.
No, two point one.
Two, sorry, two point, two point. Two point one.
Give us seven hundred thousand.
Two, uh, two point.
Well. I, we'll go through all this, but I think, you know, I think it's really, there's so much good information and there's so much. Digestible summaries that is prepared in this document, that we need to spend a little time. Thinking about how to just people, you know, give people the context. Uh, you know, and even the staff too. We're not saying no to you because we don't think you deserve to have people, it's just exactly this.
So we're, we're willing to take it from who's axis is gonna be doing. By me giving you something else. Yeah, we have the police contract last week, the fire contracts, so yeah, those are not too big as unions. Schools have another year in their teachers' contract, so if you have a cost serving, then they're gonna have to negotiate a new teachers' contract. Uh, just given inflation, things like that. Just not gonna get the help, because we saw in the last contract, so they'll, they'll be feeling a lot of pressure. This is like sex at the school, we feel a lot of pressure on wages.
Startup administration select board?
Uh, administration is like all personnel for us, an increase of seventeen thousand. That's the estimated contractual increases. For the staff that we currently have, it was not included, requesting extra help. Good at cupcakes, but you bring these.
I know.
Uh, advisory, I don't know if you have any questions on that?
Uh, yeah, so.
A couple of years ago, we had a little disparage. Divergence between the union staff and non-union staff, and the non-union staff didn't have a wage and salary plan. A lot of union staff was getting staff and raise increases. The non-union staff was just getting wage increases, so nothing separating. So plot, plot, put one together, the point was.
Yeah.
To you, so we tried to compare to the union and non-union staff, so now the staff can step aside.
So. That's why twenty-four, I've donated four thousand, and I just said. Recommended. That's all, got it.
Advisory committees next, the advisory committee is seeking an overall increase of a whopping one hundred twenty-five dollars. Hundred fifteen is for this voting secretary. Ten dollars is for the dues. They'd ask for initial twenty-seven hundred for printing in forms.
Questions? More asked me to make sure I say this, so I will. So, yeah, the twelve hundred and seven thousand two hundred and forty.
Uh, reserve fund, no change in reserve fund?
To. General liabilities?
Sure, my ability property insurance, as we discussed in the presentation, that is right now at a ten percent increase. Increase one hundred ninety thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And that has been never recommended by the. The day is second, January, we'll get better numbers from Myers.
Uh, I guess folks at home know, this line item, uh, one point two billion. Yeah, ten percent increase. Questions? Our favorite, streetlights.
Streetlights, no change.
Do you get them fixed?
They're all getting fixed.
You know, people call, they go on a list, we don't bring the company and do a streetlight. Yeah, we have a couple of work to bring them in and get done, so. Be waiting a month or two months before you see anybody, but. So we just can't afford to have a company fix lights, doesn't.
When's the last time they were out of the crew? Yeah, because there was, uh, there was one, one street that's been on the list for longer than two months.
Let me, let me know it is again.
Yeah. You, you know.
Hundred twenty-five thousand, no change.
Breck's comp was happy news, I would reduce by twenty thousand dollars. We have, we are self-funded for Breck's comp. And we have a goal of having our fund have seven hundred fifty thousand, and we've got that, so we do set. Recruitment is not changing at this point.
No, I want it's what, sixty, sixty-five? Yeah, so there's no, um, no change. Sixty-five thousand.
Yes, it was posted.
No, it's, it's in place. Your questions, will we have?
Not at this time.
Uh, thank you.
Sorry, wasn't bad news, but.
And thank you for negotiating some of the two.
That's just just about the finances, right?
Right. We have. Up next, just one. One day liquor license, again, folks are home. Everything is in order in our backup. That's for private event, November twenty-fifth. So, Gar Hall, any questions or concern?
None, I don't, I don't, I don't, it's not going for, I'm just.
Right, it's page one eleven. Uh, I guess I could do the motion, right?
You can.
Yeah, and the move to approve a one-day water malt license to the Family Press Catering for Providence, Gar Hall, three fifty-two countryway, November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Twenty-six P M, twenty-nine thirty P M. Harrison, almost favor.
Aye.
Aye. Yes. She and I will discuss the twenty twenty-four select board meeting schedule. Discuss and vote on the meeting schedule, so.
Schedule was fine with me, that I will tell you that I will be in place one meeting. And I don't think it's worth shifting it for, I'm not being bullied. Is there January thirtieth? No one else is gonna do it on the thirty?
There's no January thirty.
Oh.
There you go.
Too close to my birthday.
Definitely, I know I have that.
We can add one, like, would you like?
No, I, I was just.
I mean, this is all, yeah, the schedule is subject to change, but this is a.
Good for all the other boards. We should have Monday the twenty-ninth. Those two.
Yeah, I mean, I would be out one of them.
Yeah.
I missed one last year. We are meeting all actually.
I know.
Motion?
Look to accept the, uh, twenty twenty-four select board, uh, meetings.
It's unanimous.
Susan, the Lynn Hill Board of Selecting used to meet on election night, our election.
True.
And at eight o'clock, they would recess.
I go down.
And wait, and then the meeting would restart, and on one occasion, the meeting restarted with a different select board.
So I have so many.
Because I was like, you're, you're in, definitely up again.
That happened during March, folks, haven't we?
Yeah, so last election, they just.
Oh my God, oh, this is.
Not coming in, right?
Do you have any? Uh, the ads on the boards?
I don't have the ads. The Waterways Committee, they did vote on the dock boxes, so that's going to be pointing to our. Agendas. They did vote for a dock. Yeah, that is a change, and they're like, have to bring it to. Um, which I haven't seen it on agenda, so I'm gonna have to move back to them to remind them. To you, Crane.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With the brand new docks.
It's, so it's not the brand new dock, it's the dock right at the, um. Over at the Maritime Center.
Oh, yeah. Just the maritime.
Just the Maritime Center.
I was gonna say.
So the issue, so the issue with the dock boxes at the Maritime Center, because it's for accessibility. The, um, docks are wider over there, so you can still, it's still like accessible to. So we will be getting that. Um, Beach Commission, we had a beach cleanup this, um, past weekend at Peggy, which was great. Um, and also beach grass planting, ten thousand. Three still planted, I had a whole bunch of fruit. Um, yeah, that was awesome, that was with, um, the North South River Watership Association. And, um, Citrope Trash and contributor mission, and, um, local businesses that, um, donated. Lanes and, um, also, I think Maria's food for lunch. We had Maria's for lunch as well.
Oh, nice.
Um, so, yeah, so that was Donuts for breakfast, um, it's for lunch, um. And then Shellfish, the South River was open last week, um, and then the North River is, was open today. Um, and the difference was the testing results, so the North River will be a degree test, um. Thank you, Rockland, um, so those are both open, and the weather is beautiful, so, um. Good to get out there, and very accessible, the locations, um, and I'll remind people that we have reciprocal licenses. With Marshfield and Citrope, so you get a license in Citrope, and you can go and Marshfield and Citrope, and. Most of the area, you can like walk right onto the class, so you don't need a boat.
And what, so what are you looking for this time? I have.
What are you looking for?
Yeah, no, I, seriously. Muscles, plants, some of like soft shells.
Soft shell plants, soft plants, so, and then also, um, like, well. Yes, steamers.
Steamarm receivers or dogs? Go get them.
Go get them. And.
After your license.
After you get your license. Also, uh, I will say, I attended the North South River Watership Association Annual Meeting. And the reason I attended this past weekend was that, um, a couple of awards were given, um. Dave Dopney and Brad White got the award for Volunteer Advocate of the Year, um, they worked with the Shellfish. And our South River advocacy for Shellfish, so that was awesome, and then, um. One, our science teacher, Ralph Corrado, in, at Citrope High, got. Science teacher, one of the citizens, science volunteers, so that he had his high school students there. On some testing that they do in Joshia, and also with, um, Colossus Center for. Postal studies in the Gulf River, so there's some areas over there in. More by Lincoln Park, that they're actually, um, doing some testing there. Um, so lots going on, that's my, those are my. Reports.
That's great.
It was a busy week. Nothing to report.
I have Mark Card, sheet cover, capital. I have, she's abilities later. I have a correspondence.
Oh, I do have correspondence, the, um, annual veterans lunch, I think they've already talked about this.
Yeah.
Uh, November eleventh, Saturday, November eleventh ceremonies were being at eleven, um, and reservations, um. Please call Jean at six one seven eight four two zero zero nine two. Um, and that is a great event.
There's one that's.
Always has something in the mic pack. And it is regarding the light pass road seawall, um, and short section of Brack, Brack Road, um. And it's a correspondence from Dave Paul, um. He's aware that some of the residents have emailed us about the seawall, um, and he's appreciative of our vote. To move that project forward in the planning stages.
Did we all receive those? I received multiple of them.
I felt like when I responded to them, then I got more, so I felt like they, every time I responded, they got away.
What's a form letter?
It was a form, it was a form letters, it's a form letter we got in our, um, the list we stick at this.
No, my point is, is somebody responded, like, I didn't respond because honestly. If, if, if somebody's just sending a basic kind of letters to me, and I get twenty of them in a row. I, I just haven't had the energy to respond, and I, I feel like we should tell Dave, yes, we get them, yes, we heard them. I don't know, if you guys are responding or not.
Yeah, so I hear you, my response was to, and I'm not sure everyone tuned in too late, and they, they got our. Select their meetings, because we did vote for it late, so I did respond saying. Um, thank you, and that we let it all know that we voted to move forward and, um, study. Not only long term, but short term solutions as well. So.
I'm fine.
So great to the applicants, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, we see it, see it differently, but someone wants to send me a form letter. That's the best way they could communicate.
Oh, yeah, I don't, I, I don't want to discourage anyone, but I just. I, I don't, I don't want to say the form butter map is.
You're right.
You know? So it's a little overwhelming. Um, I did forget one place on the thing that I didn't want to say, is mark your calendars for November nineteen. Is Santa Carina Day, hosted by the, uh, Cape Verde Sister Sleep. Uh, there's a mass and a walk, and then a celebration at Saint Mary's off.
Oh, nineteen.
Me, that's not a, what do you have on my card?
Uh, yeah, I know.
I don't know who's holding it. I think we both are, because there's so many events.
I know, they're doing a great job.
They're doing a great job, yes.
Okay, and thank you to all of the Irish listeners that came this year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Recently, was there recently?
Well, I know that Brenda O'Connor was on stage with a man group, yes, uh, two days ago with the, I think that was the last guy. Director.
Fabulous.
Okay. Alright.
Do you have a motion to accept the minute for the select board meeting held on October sixteen, October nineteen, and October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three?
Second.
Seconded by. Harrison, all's in favor, say aye. There's unanimous, so we have a motion, adjourns, I have documents. Probably seconds, Harrison, all's in favor of that.